All right, I'd like to call the September eighth, two thousand and fifteen, time of our Golden Selectmen's meeting to order. If we please stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so the forcing on the agenda is if we have any residents that want to have any kind of public comment. And if you do, if you go to the podium.
I have been at the Pines for almost three years. And for the first two plus years, I've had to run my-
You're gonna have to, if you don't mind, just go to the podium so people can hear on TV.
And identify yourself if you could, please.
I'm Karen Corn from the Pines. And for two and a half years, I've had to run my water for twenty minutes to get it to come clear. I could tolerate that. And then it went to an hour. Still not very convenient to take a shower. But then it started going to two hours and it still wasn't clean. I was getting this. I went to the water department multiple times over the past two years. And always told, there's nothing wrong with the water. These are the results. Been told that I'm the only one that complains about it. And I end up, when my water got to this point, I ended up calling the DEP. And they come out and they saw the water in my toilet bowl, in my tub, and in my sink. And said, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. And he starts taking pictures. I don't know what his findings are yet. I think you people may have them, I don't know. I recently went to the pizza place uptown near the, where the wash and dry place was. And I asked for a glass of water and she says, our water is kinda yellow. You might not want it. I called the representative from West Newbury, Leonard Miller, or Miller, something like that. And he had called the water department twice for me. And all of a sudden, today's the first day my water came out clear. This is, this is real water. That's clear. This is this morning's water. But this is what I've been living with. I showed the health department this one. And I guess it was the nurse for the health department and she says to me, that's just rust. And I said, well, I can't drink that. And she says to me, go buy water. I said, I can't wash in that. And her answer to me was, well, there's no bacteria in it. And I said, how do you know that? And she's, because nobody in the town's gotten sick. So I think that's totally unacceptable, unacceptable, especially from a nurse. I asked the water department where the state lab was in Massachusetts. And he looked at me like I had three heads and said, there is no such thing. I said, there isn't? Because I come from New Hampshire originally and I've always had my water tested in Conket. I told him, well, I'll bring my water up to Conket to have it tested. And he said, you can't do that. So I wasn't gonna waste a hundred something dollars for them to refuse it because it came from a different location. I asked him where he has his water tested and I think he said, he gave me the name of the place and I think it is a private company. Private companies, because I've had wells all my life, private companies are there to sell products. They do their tests for products, not for what really is in the water. State labs tell you really what's in the water. We get our test results, what, once a year? It's always the year afterwards we get them. The last result I saw showed that the nitrates in the water is at ten. State law tells you ten is the highest before it's very dangerous. You should not be drinking water with ten nitrates. So anyway, private labs can be called certified labs, but it could also mean that just their equipment is certified. So that's where I leave it at. And I just happy that the water came out clean today. I don't know why. This is almost showerable, but I couldn't drink it.
Okay. So if I don't know if anyone else is in the audience from-
Yeah, same thing.
Okay. Right. And I had a gentleman drop off at my shop, a letter that he wanted read. I don't know if we need to read it, but this is his water sample. He lives in the Pines and he's having the same problems. But we had a letter that was given to me tonight and I think I gave you guys it. They're saying that the water line over there is dead-ended. It's not a looped line. And what's happening is the sediments are being brought into the loop line and sitting in the pipes. And what's happening is you guys are getting sediment from that. That's why the town hall isn't getting the sediments. And as you can tell in this letter, they're saying that it needs to be flushed more often. So I know this has been on Facebook and there's been a lot of PR about this on Facebook. And a lot of people are saying the Selectmen have no business talking about this. The only reason that I was gonna let you come in tonight and talk and talk about is because you people need to have a hearsay, someone to hear. What I was suggesting is follow up with this letter with the water department, our board. And we'll ask them if they can follow up with their flushing, do flushing more often, et cetera, et cetera. And try and improve the quality. I know there's people on Granton Avenue, Main Street, there's a lot of people that have been complaining. I know there are older pipes in the town. And older pipes obviously give off rust and sediment. And I'm not saying that's right for you people to have to put up with that. But all we can try and do is talk to our commissioner or the commissioners here in the water department. See if we can get them to do more flushing and try and improve the quality. And hopefully it will improve. And if it doesn't, I guess come back and see us. Yeah, I don't know.
Same, been flushing.
Yeah. How often do they flush the pipes? Not, not of the residents, but- Not the residence pipe, but the town pipes? I'm assuming that's where part of it's coming from.
They opened up the hydrants last week and it was clear water.
Yeah, I don't know how often they do. I should, I would out speak if I did. I don't know.
Yeah, we should find out how mu- how often they do it or what they should move to.
Twice a year? Twice a year?
What would be their recommendation? They go to three times, four times?
They're gonna go four times a year.
So they say they're gonna do four times a year now, then, over where you are?
Do you feel flushing hydrants is gonna cure the problem?
Well, I'm not a water person. I don't really know. You know what I'm saying? It's their recommendation and that's all I can say. And obviously of old pipes, it's gonna cost a lot of money to change the infrastructure. I'm not saying that's what the problem is, but if it is the problem, if they're saying it's a loop line, which you have over there is a loop line and it's all sitting, hopefully it will. And if you can tell in three, four months, if it's improving, then we got the problem. If not, then we'll have to look at it again.
Yeah, but if a big part of the town is having a problem, the problem must be in the water department somehow.
Well, it's probably, I don't wanna overspeak. You know, I mean, it probably could be old infrastructure. I don't really know. You know what I'm saying?
They claim that infrastructure is the oldest in town along Main Street.
It probably is, but I'm not really sure. I can't really speak.
It was the main line that New Week was many, many years ago.
How close to your area was the fire hydrant that got flushed? Is it right next door or is it a couple hundred yards away? How close is it?
It was at, they're right near the downstairs.
So at the beginning of-
I'm in building three, exactly in building three.
I believe they have several throughout the complex.
Yeah, there's one in the circle. I've had dirty water for a year and a half. I've been there, I believe.
Do you see it getting worse?
Yes.
Oh, much worse.
I can definitely clear.
Much worse.
Well, I can, I can-
I've had all the water and even in the pot, you were trying to drink it.
Okay. I don't know, I can ask the board this. Do you guys wanna see if we can bring the water commissioners in and the water board in? Say we have these people here and see what, see if they can put any more light on it for them? I mean, except for you guys, I'm only one person.
Could shed a little bit of light on the second half of this letter.
Go ahead, Dan.
Similar to what we did with, you know, the police and the highway department. If it's their jurisdiction, I think we could just reach out to them with some correspondence and ask them what, what, what is being done to cure that problem?
Well, he has it here in this letter. He said what he's gonna do and what he's looked at. He thinks flushing it three or four times a year will cure the problem.
Well, the end users are saying what? It's already been done and it hasn't solved the problem. So I mean, if they need a perfected solution, what would it cost to up the loop line if that's the solution? I'm not a water guy either. I'm not a plumber. Certainly, if that whole neighborhood, I wouldn't tolerate that. I'd be calling every day. I mean, I wouldn't put up with that. It's gonna devalue your house. That was what was coming out of my faucet. I'd wanna tax rebate on the assessment because the house is worth two cents with, you know, mud coming out of the drain. So I'm with you people. I wouldn't take no for an answer on that coming out of the faucet. If, if the pipes are in your house, because your house is, you know, three hundred years old and you got rusty pipes, well, that's your own plumbing problem. But if you can isolate the problem and the pipes are the town's pipes that are rusted, that I think the town should replace the water. That's our jurisdiction, but certainly we, the customer service department of this town. So if we can relay the message-
We should, we should talk to the water-
Get a dialogue.
Let me just ask one question.
But I agree, if you, it's up to you, Bill. If you wanna invite them in here to have a dialogue fight, if you wanted, you know, give them a model correspondence to say-
Basic necessity, so that makes sense with rust.
I've had at least four phone calls from that complex. And a lot of people tell me they know it's Wednesday morning or Tuesday morning, whatever night the fireman, I think the fireman practice on Tuesday. Is that true that Wednesday the water's the worst or you don't?
It's Monday and day.
They put it in day. So it's not like, okay.
It's not regular.
Sunday, Sunday and Monday, three days in a row.
Okay. Is it both hot water and cold water?
No, it used to be the hot water and I thought, that's when I thought it was the building problem. But now, if I run the, this is what's really weird. If I run the hot water only, the toilet bowl gets dirty. And just comes up and going, how does that happen? How does your toilet bowl, without refreshing it, automatically get dirty? That makes no sense. And then I had all this black, gooey stuff around the tank.
One thing I know that needs to be done is, and you can pass it around in the building, is when you guys have this problem, when you're having the problem, you need to call the water department right away. And, and they're gonna log it and they're supposed to either look at it or log it. I don't know, I don't wanna overspeak again, but I know you've gotta call them directly with your complaint and they'll log it in.
And he has come directly up. The last time we went down there, he was putting up to come right up. And from where he, where he looks at for the hot water tank or something? He says, it's fine. So, I don't know. At one point, some, somebody hired a plumber to come out. And probably hired a plumber. And the guy came to my apartment and he said to me, it's coming right from the street. He says, it's like black water here.
It's vertical, those pipes are going to build in the ages, so.
Right.
Comes in the street more than those places.
Yeah. Well-
You have copper pipe and PVC pipe in the house. It's modern.
All I can say is if, if it's the consensus of a board, if you wanna have the truck, the water department, the director and the board come into us and we'll talk to them and see if they can come up with something. And it sounds like they've been trying to get this resolved for a while. It's our job to try and, to try and help them. All right, go ahead, Joe.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. It's a very serious matter. I'm sure that the entire board is very concerned. A couple of things to shed some light. Flushing hydrants is a good idea. But there's a couple of things that have not been done consistently and now going forward, they will be. And we're gonna need your eyes and your ears and your samples to tell us how things are going on. The head of the DEP did come in on August twenty-sixth. He stayed with the sewer commissioner, physically stood with him. And when they flushed the hydrants, it took three to five minutes for it to come out clear. Gives me a little bit of comfort that there isn't a source issue, like we have, you know, a serious problem at, you know, at the aquifer level or some source. Now, on September third, the folks from the water department also spent some time with the maintenance mechanic from your building, Jim. And they spent two and a half hours flushing the one and a half inch water lines that serviced the building from the source. And the hot water tanks to the buildings. The existing tanks are seven years old and the one in the build, in building two is showing signs of scaling. Not sure what that means, probably not a good thing. He also did something that had been done in a while. He calculated the daily flow, which is about seventy percent of what the state allows. So it's really low flow. So when you have low flow, older tanks, older pipes, in a dead-end street, you're going to have stuff in your water, unfortunately.
So why the cold water?
I'm no expert on that. My wife wears the pants. I don't even know how to use a screwdriver, so just bear with me. The waters, so here are some of the recommendations and I'm hopeful for you. We all are. We all care about you, of course. The water department will increase flushing the water mains in the Pines complex to quarterly. And of course, they'll notify you in advance. This is an important step. The pine maintenance personnel, which is basically Jim, should establish a flushing program, a consistent, regular flushing program at the main service line, just like they did two, two hours of the one and a half inch water service line. They spent two hours. Maybe they should do that quarterly or more. That, you know, that's its own spot. And internal plumbing for each building. They need to look at the internal plumbing. There could be some issues there as well. Now, this I know from living in an old apartment, exist, even though it doesn't always come from hot water, existing water heaters should be evaluated and upgraded. I know that's an expense. This is a building that cannot have old water heaters, unfortunately. You're gonna have to shorten the use of those water heaters. Number four, so number one, the water department will increase flushing four times a year. Number two, the pine maintenance should establish a flushing program for main service line and the plumbing for each building. Number three, existing hot water heaters should be upgraded. He was being kind. I guess the word to use there is replaced. And it, number four, if, if an expansion of the building is considered in the future, the existing dead ends should be looped. This could mitigate, but it's not gonna solve your problem today. And after a year of increased flushing, both parties should evaluate the condition. My opinion, I think the board feels very strongly, we'd like to have the water folks come in before then. And then we'd like to see them a heck of a lot sooner than a year from now, like six weeks from now or two months from now. And hopefully we'll have some improvement. So, so it sounds like, once the hydrants were flushed and they were cleared three to five minutes later in the presence of the DEP authority, and then they spent, you know, two hours flushing the lines. And the lines are really not flushed regularly and you have old tanks. It seems to be more of an inside the building type problem, not outside. That's my unscientific assessment of this.
Everybody came, I was late, I didn't wanna call them. But the water was dirty during the next day. So that means, and again, it's, how does the cold water get dirty?
We don't know. But we can ask that question. When, if Bill, like I said, the board will maybe ask the water folks to come in and we'll ask that question. And maybe we'll kinda keep them notified as to what's going on. But these seem to be really proactive steps. But Jim, the maintenance guy is probably is gonna have to do some things that have not been done regularly, not, not to any fault of his own. It's just that we have a situation and it's, you know, the evidence is kinda pointing at the building. I mean, the smoking gun is the building, not, not the sort, not Golden Water.
Can I ask you a question? Is it in both buildings or one building?
All four.
All four buildings. So it's all, it's not just like, so it's all four buildings? Okay. So we can't spend much more time on this. You know we're gonna work on it. I ask if you guys can, in the, in the interim, if you can put some of your, what your problems are over there on a piece of paper. So when we do meet with the water board, one representative can give it over to the Cassandra, our Selectmen Secretary, listing your problems and what have you. We'll have them in our presence and I can lead with the board. We'll bring the board and the commissioners in. We'll sit them down, we'll talk to them and see what we can come up with. I'm not gonna say it's inside, outside, 'cause I don't really wanna say that. I'm just saying that I'll be here and I will, you know, get whatever information I can get from you guys and hopefully get this resolved. I mean, I can't say I can resolve it, but, you know, some people in town say we have no business doing this. But I mean, you guys really need to have someone speak for you. You know what I'm saying?
And the people in town who took the town report and they see the ten nitrates, they should be concerned.
But thank you for coming in.
Is it, is it just dirty or is it unclean? You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Has anybody ever tested it?
I, I don't know. I don't, would have to talk to the person in charge of the building over there if it has been tested.
We were in, I believe, the first building, one above Tom, about a year ago. And after you do the dishes, you know, you stack them on that strainer, it turns pink and has film and scum. And I asked Jim then if they had ever tested it. I probably should have tested it myself then, but-
I don't know if this board is, do we have the jurisdiction to ask to have that water tested or ask the water department to have it tested?
We can see if they have tested it. They may have.
Will we write them, in that night, we have, maybe probably sooner than later, we should ask them?
Well, we don't have authority, we have courtesy. We can always ask them.
Right. Let's ask them sooner than later if it's been tested, at least to put these guys at ease. You know what I'm saying? If it hasn't, then really we should probably have it tested that left the residents, you know, it's going on. Right, it's safe.
Great idea.
Hopefully this, this letter will get to the maintenance guy and he can probably look at some of these things.
I gave two letters already in the audience. I think Denise can make more.
Yeah, this, this was dated today. So I mean, Ed, you're right. I mean, this is just happening. This is live and unrehearsed, so.
Well, the letter was dated today.
The only thing is we won't see you next year. We're gonna see you soon.
We don't know when they were doing, doing the inspections, do we, the date?
They were there Thursday. Oh, the DEP, yes. It's in the letter.
August twenty-sixth.
August twenty-sixth.
So have you guys had problems since August twenty-sixth till now? Like in the last few days, have you had brown water?
Yes.
So it's still going on, so?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I've had black water.
Okay. So we're doing the interim, in the short term, we're gonna get a water test over there for you? We're gonna ask, I don't know if we can, we're gonna ask the water department to get it tested for you ASAP, put you guys at ease there. And then we'll, we'll work on bringing the water board in, bringing the commissioners in. We'll try talking to them and see what they can do to get this thing moving. All right?
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you for coming in. So this here, that goes for that, right here.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Gilford for Abbott Circle. I'm a member of the fire department. And I wanted to invite the board of selectmen to a ceremony. The fire department will be honoring eight members of our department who will be receiving certificates from the Massachusetts Fire Service Commission for twenty years or more of service to the fire department. And we'll be planning that ceremony on Tuesday, October thirteenth at seven PM. I'll follow it up with a written invitation, that we wanted to invite the board of selectmen or a representative. All of you would be invited if you so choose, or a representative would definitely be invited. And we'll not only be honoring the eight members who have twenty years or more service, but we'll also be recognizing three members of the department who graduated recently from the Massachusetts Fire Academy, Call Volunteer Firefighter Recruit Training Program, which was a two-hundred-and-forty-hour course to certify them as firefighters. The other thing I, I wanted to bring up, I wanted to use you as a forum. If anyone in town who lived here during the seventies, I'm doing a little research on a firefighter, Lieutenant Elmer Thompson, who died in the line of duty. He had a heart attack driving one of the fire trucks to a fire in nineteen seventy-two, passed away. So I'm looking for anyone in town who is living here at that point of time that either knows one of his relatives or has a photograph of him. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak on the open Selectmen's speak time? All set? Everyone spoke? All right, so moving on, we have Mike approve the warrants. Let's start out with the-
Motion to approve payroll warrant number sixteen dash eleven in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Four. Motion to approve deduction warrant number sixteen dash zero nine A in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Four.
Motion to approve bill warrant number sixteen dash eleven in the amount of one million, two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor?
Four.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so we are gonna move on to the appointments. And we have the first appointment of Catherine Shaw of fifty-five Garrison Street, Groveland, to the position of a part-time outreach worker for the Groveland Council on Aging effective September twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen. This position is a ten to eighteen hour week with a starting rate of pay of fifteen forty-seven.
I'd like to introduce you to Catherine Shaw.
How you doing? So do you have anything to say or?
I appreciate your time and I appreciate the appointment. And I believe that my skills and experience and then the resume is the most important. I believe that it would benefit the department.
Could you do me a favor?
Certainly.
We got, we got it, but the people watching the TV, you just give a quick overlay of your background?
Oh, sure.
Just something simple, nothing-
Oh, sure. Well, related to the position.
Right, right.
I've worked at two hospitals, Indian Hospital and ICU in critical care as a secretary. And I've also, I'm currently working at Genesis Healthcare in North Andover. And I'm a secretary there as well. And I took care of my mother for many years at home.
All right, so-
I don't think you could find a better person qualified, I remember taking care of my mother and she always did a great job. I think, very well qualified, she'd do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, so-
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion? And we all in favor?
Second.
Second by Joe?
Second.
All in favor?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down the list, we have an important appointment of Stephen J. Collins, thirty-seven Garrison Street, Groveland, to the position of a full-time highway senior driver, operator, laborer, effective September twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, with a starting rate of pay of twenty-four thirty-eight and a twenty-three dollars and sixty-three cent base pay and a seventy-five cent trapper license. I see Stephen involved in the audience and I know the highway department needs another guy. And I know that you have worked, I believe, for Methuen.
Yeah, I did.
You're moving on from Methuen over to Groveland. And that's good. And I heard a lot of good things about you. My son talks a lot about you. So that's good.
He's presently at Methuen now.
So he'll be leaving?
His department, he's in the tree department and the cemetery department.
Does anyone have any further discussion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint him.
And seconding?
Second.
Mike seconding? And all in favor?
Four.
Four.
All set? Thank you. Okay.
Well done.
All right, the next appointment is for John A., and I was trying to pronounce this-
It's Gabor.
Gabor Esquire.
Fill up with it.
I didn't want to- Of eighty-three School Street to fill the vacancy of the Conservation Commission through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. I know I've seen John quite a bit in our meetings and what have you. And he seems like to me like he's pretty involved in the town. So I don't know if there's any other discussion? All right, a second?
I'll second it.
And seconding? And all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Appointment of Casey Bailey of Sixth Queen Street, Groveland, to fill the vacancy of the Zoning Board of Appeals through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. Is Casey here or no?
I don't think she was planning to be here, no.
All right, so does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint.
Second?
Casey Bailey to the Zoning Board of Appeals through June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, seconding?
Second.
Michael seconding? And all in favor?
Yeah.
I'm gonna withstand him on the board.
Okay. All right, moving on. Right on time, time on clock. We have the Board of Library Trustees to present three candidates for appointment to fulfill vacancies. Nominations for appointments are- Tracy, you know what to do? We're gonna probably have to have him come to the public. But I don't wanna change what I've been doing. If you don't mind. Yeah, just, you know, whatever. I just wanna pick up the sound. I didn't know, at this point in time, I think I wanna gear, try to gear this meeting- onto a discussion on the library right now. And there's a lot of above problems with resonations, what have you, over the library. I don't know what exactly is going on. I don't know if someone wants to speak, rather not speak. I will say, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. Is there any trustees here?
Two.
Two.
I just.
Okay.
I think you have to go to the.
To the podium.
Oh, pardon.
Well, I'll just ask, while you're sitting in the chairs, I'm just gonna ask a couple of quick questions to the trustees. And, um, I'm not trying to be smart when I say this. I've only heard many a people calling me, many a problems, and many a complaints. The first question I wanna ask the trustees, who runs the library on a daily basis? Whose responsibility is the daily basis of running the library? That would be personnel.
The library director.
Library director. Okay. Do you guys know the director's role? What is the actual director's role at the library?
So, to run the, the library on a daily basis, to hire the staff of the library, and to work with the board trustees for the service of the library to the community.
Okay, so the director is pretty much manager?
Yes.
Okay, so the director pretty much handles personnel, personnel problems, and anything on a daily basis?
Yes.
Okay. What are the trustees' role?
Um, well, the, the trustees just had their bylaws ratified, or if that's the right word, at the town meeting, the last town meeting. So, the library trustees' role is, you know, written out there, and the board shall have, under, sec-, Article Three, Section Three says, uh, the board shall have care, custody, and control of the library holdings, including annual reviews of the director, and the board shall be responsible for conducting a search and appointing a new director if necessary. I mean, there are other details here, but I, I do think that clarity of roles and discussion with town council would be useful to clarify.
Right, okay.
What is, you know, what comes under personnel and what comes.
Yeah, let me, I, and I'm not trying to shut you off, let me just carry where I'm trying to go with this. So, what is the board's role? The chairman, vice chairman, what is their role? And I'm not trying to pick, you're just talking, so.
Okay, so that, that's, that's here in, in the bylaws also. The chairperson presides over meetings of the board, prepares and distributes the agenda for all board meetings, calls special meetings of the board, hosts all meetings as required by law, appoints committees of one or more members for such business as the board requires. So, specific business as the board requires. The vice chair does, performs the duties of the chair at their request or in their absence. Secretary does the minutes and hosts all the minutes as required by law, reports and distributes minutes.
Okay, I, I think I got it. Okay, the, the finance director and slash payroll person in the town of Groveland. What do you directors think that that person's role should be? Now, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk about payroll, personnel. The personnel. So, the personnel person in the town of Groveland, what would that role of that person be? What would you think?
To clarify anything like there's, you know, a need that, that's the word I wanna say, disciplinary actions. If, if the director needs to do that kind of thing, they would check in with the personnel director to see what the process is in part.
So.
They would also.
Okay, so.
Like benefits of what.
So, it would be employees.
Employees' clarification.
Probably not the directors and probably not the chair and the co-chair, but it would be employees of that building that person would be involved in. Am I correct when I say that?
Well, um, there are personnel issues, yes, not, not necessarily.
But that person, I don't think should be in the role of getting involved in the trustees' chairman and what, what we just talked about. That person should only take care of personnel. Like, in this town hall building, that person would take care of someone that would have wage issues or whatever. Like, we just hired a highway guy, now she would take over for that highway guy.
You're trying to separate all the power.
Right. What I'm trying to do, and this is only how I've seen it, and, and, and listen, people have come to me and they've asked me, can I help? I've given this a lot of thought, okay? Number one, and, and, and people say I, I overspeak myself all the time, but I'm honest. I'm gonna say it the way I see it. The people in that library don't know their jobs. They don't know who has what role, and people are stepping over people's feet. So, people are getting upset and what have you, and I think what needs to, either we have too many positions here, we don't need a director, and we don't need all these people. We have too many people, or the people really need to know their roles. And at this point in time, and I don't wanna sound like threatening, but at this point in time, it is such a mess. It's getting to the point where the library's gonna have to be reclosed and reorganized and reopened. I mean, it's really, the state is getting involved now, and, and we don't, we're all wrong people. We really need to put our heads together and really try to figure this thing out. And I'm probably one of the biggest-hearted persons, and I hate to see people fighting, arguing, and what have you, and people quitting. Listen, we just have a director that just resigned because she felt that she was being pushed out, and she didn't wanna ruin her accreditation as what her job was, and she feels like she got pushed out. She left the job, she came here to the town of Groveland, was going to buy a house. I mean, it took nine months, I believe, for you people to find her. I could be wrong. A long time, but.
So, so I just wanted to back up a minute. So, the library director was still on her six-month probation.
I agree.
She was not yet a full, fully.
I agree.
And I, I do not know why she resigned, 'cause I am not yet, don't have her resignation.
Yeah.
Other than she resigned.
Right.
So, that's all I know. So, that's a challenge too, is that.
Yeah.
You know, we're all not on the same, we don't all have the same information, so that's, that's challenging.
Right. I only can tell you that I've had a couple of phone calls from her. She did call me. In, in one of the last phone calls, she felt she was being pushed out, and she did not want to stay in the role, be pushed out, and then not be able to get a job someplace else. And she, she got pushed out, she felt that she was not gonna be able to get a job, so she decided, I'm gonna leave. I'm gonna pack it in, I'm not gonna fight this fight.
So, one of the things that I like about the six-month probation is that it, it usually, you leave without issue.
Right.
I mean, that's, and that's what I love about a probation, no matter where it is.
Right.
Um, you know, I work at Ebstone, they have a six-month probation, and, you know, you leave without, you know, it doesn't matter who is dissolving it, you leave without issue.
Right, but in her, in her, I'm not, I don't know, I haven't got the, any reading, I'm probably going too deep here, but if she's trying to be a director and, and she can't do her director's job because it's not going together the right way. Whatever, I'm, and, and that, that's not what I'm here. I'm here to try and put this thing together and to get this thing to work. And I definitely think that we, the library needs to know their role. Everyone needs their role, and everyone needs to stay to their roles, and that's it. And, and, and we had an issue where Ed and I had a sit-down with Denise because there was a lot of flack about a new hiring in town, being related to a person over there, what have you. We met with Denise, we said, listen, what you need to do is just.
Right.
Do, do the finance job, do the, you know what I mean, do the, the personnel job and what have you, but all I'm saying is, people need to know their.
Right, and I think that that, that specifically, the new hire and posting a job, I personally think that that is something that the library director, under transparency and communication with the board, and how the library works to serve the community, would be that conversation with the board. And the board had no knowledge of the, um, the change in one of our two positions that are, are full-time and benefited, completely changed, um, the role without discussion with the board. So, that is, I think, a very difficult position to put the, the director in, when she's, when, you know, she feels like she's doing it the right way, and, and yet we feel like that wasn't the right way.
Right, right. And as you know, in, in government, and as you people know, in, in the positions you people are in, sometimes it's hard to be honest. And I'm not saying, not saying you're dishonest, but it's hard to say the way you really feel sometimes. And you don't wanna hurt people's feelings and what have you, so when those discussions come up, they gotta, they gotta come up and be nipped in the bud. Right away. That's the best way to deal with it. Nip it in the bud right away, take care of the problem, shake the person in the hand, hey, whatever, mistake was made or whatever, and we're gonna move on. We're all gonna work together. And that's, you know, I, I can't sit here as a board, we can't sit here as a board and try to meddle in what's going on over there. All we can try and do is help, and that's, you know, I feel bad what's going on. I wanna see this thing run smoothly. It's, it's a piece of government that, that is really vital to our town.
And, and, and one of the concerns that I heard you say is that, you know, the library might have to close. I really don't think the library does have to close. It has enough personnel to keep it open. The trustees have all signed, um, you know, confidentiality agreement so that we can help staff on, in a short-term position to help cover it. And we are not rejected using our accreditation or our borrowing privileges. So, I just wanted to, I think that we're.
All I'm saying on my behalf is I look at it, if we've gone through three directors, we've gone through some people quitting, and it's more than one and two, it's quite a bit. So, all I'm saying is, do we need to stop this and find out what's going on, or what, what do we need to do? That's all I'm saying. I'm saying, is this a bigger problem than I'm, than I'm looking at? And I know Joe wanted to talk, I'm probably talking too much to these guys, but you had your hand up, so.
Well, anybody, anybody else? I have a, a couple of comments and some questions. First of all, a comment. I have a, a list here of the trustees that resigned. Two of them were chairs, one of them was a vice chair, one was a treasurer. Two of these folks I know personally, all of them I've worked with professionally, at the very least, my professional contact with them was, at the very least, enthusiastically approving their appointment and reappointments. Would any of them that are present here like to speak?
What do you want us to talk about?
At this, at this point, if you're gonna talk, if you don't mind going to the podium.
I could ask you a couple of questions.
I'll say one.
I could ask a couple.
Before we step up.
Yeah, I just, I just, I'd like to get a perspective of, of, I'd like to get your perspective of the condition of the library that would cause extremely talented, extremely capable, extremely enthusiastic people to quit. I think that's a fair question. And if you can't answer it, you can't answer it. That's okay. At, at least I've asked the question on camera. I don't wanna put anybody in the spot, but I, I, you know.
The only thing that I ask.
There are four people here that are on this list that I respect.
Okay.
I have a great deal of respect for, and I'm concerned as to why they left a very important institution.
The only thing that I ask is please do not name names, and please do not attack anybody. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Laurie LeBlanc, Ten Madison Avenue. I am the first one to have resigned, and I think that my resignation letter was given to you. Essentially, the board went around the chair, Jen Close. They weren't working with her at all. Letters were sent, which I believe you have, to the MBLC. And so, nothing we were doing was coming to us. Things were going on behind our back. And if we questioned it, we weren't getting any information. Because we weren't working cohesively as a board, I felt we had no choi-, I had no choice, except to leave. So, that was my decision. I can't answer for anybody else.
Thank you.
I have a little bit more. And I, and I appreciate everyone serving in any board, in any capacity. If we're down to five, we have a board of nine, but if we're down to five, it's a strict quorum, which means that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that all votes, if we only had, if we had a meeting tonight of Board of Trustees, you guys voted on something, you'd have to have five people vote unanimously. So, that's a problem. Could be wrong. Does that sound right? I believe that that's correct. On a board of nine, if you're down to five, it's strict, yeah?
They are recommending three, though, this evening to replace them.
Of course. Anybody can answer this question if you, if you choose to. If you don't, that's okay. I'm not interested in putting any person on the spot. But again, I'm, I'm just concerned. We're all imperfect here, but there was an executive session on August seventeenth to discuss the reputation and character of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. This is an executive session. Actually, it was dated, looks like, signed eight thirteen, and that executive session occurred after the regular meeting on August seventeenth. Have the minutes been released of that executive session?
No. And we're in the process, the past chair is in the process of trying, trying to have, what's the process, of going back and taking it out of executive session, making it public. You know, an open session, because it was probably not appropriate to go into executive session.
That's fine. I mean, we, we all, we all make mistakes and.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I can, I can just speak to it.
If I could just, one, one thing. Was the person invited that was the subject of the executive session?
So, Anne Marie can.
I can just speak to it. I spoke to the Attorney General and did report that the August seventeenth executive session was, should have been an open session. I went through with him, you know, what was in the minutes, and what he said is, that what the trustees will need to do is just read into the record the executive session minutes, and that we will be fine and just amend them as open session meetings.
That's an easy remedy, you just read.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. My last question, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, has anyone contacted them for any reason expressing any concern regarding our library? 'Cause I know there's a lot of rumors going on there, and we've got some really capable people out there, four, five, six, seven. I have boards here.
So.
Past and former.
So.
Again, if nobody wants to answer, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand.
It's my, you know, it's, the, I, the library board of, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, I believe, is open to anybody. It does, you do not actually have to be a trustee, but it doesn't, is not just open to chair, vice chair, trust, treasurer, and secretary. So, you know, any trustee can call, or any, any individual can call the library commissioner. I believe the past director has called, I mean, I know for a fact that the past director has called and talked with them, and since she has resigned, has also talked with them, based on the emails that I got today.
Okay. Uh, the last comment I'll make is that we do have three folks that have stepped forward. One, I know well, Jay Collins, and I guess I'm, I'm very encouraged that there are folks that are willing to step forward. That's my final comment. Thank you.
Okay.
Your time. Thank you as well.
Boy, talk to them. Anyone else have anything you wanna say?
From all those involved, I mean, is it a structural problem? Is it a case of too many cooks, or all chiefs and no Indians? Or is it an infighting situation? 'Cause it seems to me that, that the structure has been the same for years. And it's only been the last year or so where there's been all this turnover, so something's changed in the dynamic, dynamics of the organization where there's, I don't know if it's infighting, or is it who's the boss type of thing going on? Is that, is that the crux of the issue? I, I understand people are cautious, you don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I.
You don't wanna badmouth anybody, I understand, but.
I think it's, you know, what is the board, under the board's purview and what isn't. The past library director, when, when I asked her about, you know, changing, I was not at the meeting that she presented the change into a circulation manager from adult services, man, adult services person. So, but then, at the next meeting, I asked, you know, why, why didn't we, you know, bring, bring that to the board? And she said, I didn't think you would be interested in that, and I, I was, that, to me, is flabbergassing that the Board of Trustees would not care to know what roles the staff would have and what, and therefore what services would be provided to the community. So, that, that, to me, was a disconnect, that, that, you know, that would be something we would be interested in. And, and, and yet, some people on the board said, no, that, you know, that's up to the library director to do that. So, I think that, that is a disconnect between people on the board, past people on the board, and, and people on the board.
It seems to me, and the resignation letter here says, you know, that the, the board was not acting cohesively, but that's why you have a voting board to resolve the issues, and, you know, I don't always agree with the other members of this board, but you have to respect the process.
Right.
To a degree, or I, I shouldn't be here, that when you lose, you might have to.
Suck it up.
Grind your teeth, bite your lip, you know, go yell out in the hallway, but you don't always win. So, you, that's what the Board of Trustees, you're supposed to be the referee, okay? That's an issue. Is it important to the rest of the board, or it isn't?
Right.
And sometimes what you think's important falls on deaf ears and you get frustrated. I understand that. And sometimes, what you think's important falls on deaf ears, and you get frustrated. I understand that.
Right.
So somehow, the Board of, you know, your trustees needs to, I guess, resolve those issues so that it just don't linger, and then it becomes personal with people. So I don't know if that's being done.
Yeah, well...
But somehow, you know, bring it up to the board, you vote on it, and that's the end of it. If you lose five-four, that's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes.
Right.
What else can you do but you respect the process and you move on, I guess? Maybe you bring it up again, saying, "This is the problem we had, we voted it down last meeting last year, and it's still a problem. Maybe we need to revisit it." But I think that has to be a dialogue with the Board of Trustees to resolve those issues, so it doesn't trickle down to the lowest level all the way to the top, and is unresolved. You need to resolve conflicts within the organization through the Board of Trustees.
Can I just give you a name?
Of course. Jennifer Close, 24 Highland Ave. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Moore's statement about contacting the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. And I do agree with Mrs. Burton's, that anybody can contact the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. But I think the email that went to them, which I believe you all have a copy of, shows that the board isn't working together, and showed that, you know, we weren't coming to agreement. And as to your statement, Mr. McDonald, if we disagree on the way we all interpret how the role of the Library Director's job is, I think that's where we come to the problem, where, based on our personnel laws and our, the Mass Board of Library Commissioner laws and the MBLA, all the rules that go back to what a person's job description is, that's where we come up with some differences that...
So that's the battleground, is it?
It's the battleground.
Whose job is it?
Right. And who can make that decision? Do we have the ability to say, "No, you can't do that," but we just wrote that your job description is that you can do that? So...
If it's, is that job description defined by statute, or is it the town?
The town.
Well, if that's the battleground, then you define the job description, and then...
Right, but if you've already given that job description...
If it's ambiguous, then you need to clarify it. If there's two interpretations of it, or more, that it's ambiguous. So you need probably to put it before the Board of Trustees, to find the terms and clarify what's ambiguous and what's not.
And that's, I think, where we're at, is that you need the clarification of the terms, because you don't, in my opinion, it's ambiguous.
And that's where I go, and I'm not trying to be a jerk when I say this. That's where I go, and I say, we need to put something in, in the whole patent, until this is resolved, because we're gonna go through another director, we're gonna go through more people.
Right.
And that's why I'm saying, and I'm not trying to...
Right, exactly. Before you go forward, clarify.
And you're saying there's people in here tonight that want to be appointed. And I said early on in the meeting, I don't want to go to those appointments. That's why I didn't go to those appointments, because we need to put the brakes on this thing, and we need to get the clarification, and we need to get the description of who I am, who runs it, who does this, who does that. That clarification needs to be taken care of now, sooner than later.
Right.
Now, it's an easy fix.
And that's why I'm asking that the Town Council be involved in the process, so that we actually have, you know, the clarification and discussion of the Mass General Law that is in governance.
I was just gonna suggest that, Bill, that it sounds like the defining roles, and the best option is for somebody, the Library Trustee, to speak with Town Council and have the roles properly defined. It sounds like it's ambiguous as far as some of the laws that have been written.
Right.
And I think that, I'm gonna have to agree that that's the best option to go with.
Just give me one second. So what I'm saying is, and I know Joe wants to talk to another gentleman, what I'm saying is, is if we know what all our roles are, and we know what we're gonna do for a job title, we're good to go. Okay? If we don't, then we're mixing ways, and we're all getting upset, and what have you. So now, if we press forward with this thing, and we keep going with this thing, and we're gonna keep going down the bad road we're going. Now, who is the one that's gonna step up and say, "I'm gonna be the person to help direct this back together"? I personally think one person should help direct this thing back together. Just my opinion, because if you have five people talking to Town Council, it can't be done. It's gotta be someone that's gonna sit there, take this role on, and pick these pieces up. That's my opinion. I think this gentleman wants to talk.
Carlos, like I said, 88 School Street. To your point, the, having disagreements about what things we need to vote on or how we vote, I completely agree. If I lose, or we lose, that's how the cookie crumbles, and you have to suck it up and move forward. I think personally, my issue was that we all agreed that we would respect one another and not go behind the board's back, and talk to other people where then those people, like yourselves, actually send a letter to the board saying, "We hear you, and we're not gonna, we're gonna take care of this issue," when the board actually never even discussed the issue that was brought to you. And that, to me, felt like we should fix this. We talked about it, we all said, "Yes, we were." And then it turns out that everybody went about their own, about business as usual. They started talking to you guys, like if you, like if they were the board, talking to people at the MBLC, like if they were talking for the board, when none of the things that you guys have in front of you was actually discussed by the board and agreed upon to come to you to talk about anything. And that, to me, made it difficult to work with a team, where we said, "We're gonna work as a team," and then we don't.
Right. And the biggest, the biggest problem in this world is, and it's one of my big peeps, drama.
Yes.
Drama. And I say it all the time, the more drama you add into something, and the more drama, the bigger the situation gets.
Correct.
And, you know, and I'll speak on behalf of the selectmen. It came to me, I could have meddled in it deeper. I didn't want to meddle in it. I sent a letter back to you guys and said, "Could you guys all sit down? Could you try and discuss this and put this thing back together?" And we're here today because it didn't get put back together.
Correct.
So I'm only here in person with you guys to try and help put this together.
And when was that sent, though? A month ago?
Yeah, a month ago.
Two months ago, and still we're here?
Right.
I mean, this is a library. It's not the DOD, right? It's not FEMA. It's not a huge organization. It shouldn't be a big deal to work together, ten people, right?
It seems to me, and I'm not asking this question, I'm just speculating, but my speculation is that there have been emails and/or discussions outside of meetings that were illegal, where business has been conducted, votes have been aligned and agreed to in advance. That's my speculation. And that's a possibility, because when you have this kind of division, and I don't agree with this board, if this board is, wants to hire counsel and not bring new trustees on, and here's the reason why. This board has had some ferocious fights. We've had a bad start. But we don't have people leaving in droves. We don't have employees quitting, and board members quitting. So there's a difference. There's something going on. I don't know what it is. And I'm not asking, I'm not putting anyone on the spot. That's not my position. I'm not a judge or a jury. But there could be an authority that could ask those tough questions at some point, whether it's litigation, or it's an authority. So at this point, I do not wish to see anyone from the Board of Trustees engage with Town Council, because we have a document called the bylaw. You just read it and follow it, purpose and objective.
I think that that's the problem, is that we find that it's ambiguous. So some people interpret it one way, some people interpret it another way, and which way is right? So we need clarity.
The duties are very, very clear. The employees of the library fall under the jurisdiction supervisory, supervision of the Board of Selectmen through our finance director, who's also the personnel director. So again, I appreciate everyone that's served and has served, but I think we need to get the people of Groveland to elect trustees, and enough of them, who can follow this. And those that can't follow it, let's vote them out. Simple. We don't need to hire an attorney to tell us, "Just follow the bylaws." It's just my opinion.
Sorry, Dan. I like you talking to Dan. I wanted to talk.
I just, you know, from what I've heard, I mean, there is the battle over the role of that director, and if the description is ambiguous. Save a lot of time, hot egg, bickering, okay? It might be one hour of a lawyer's time to resolve the issue, and it would, they have prevented, you know, good people just waving the white flag and walking. So, you know, I believe that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I'm not a big spender. I wouldn't give you a blank check. This isn't litigation. This is more like, here's what this interpretation is, this case law, this is what they do with every five hundred towns in the state. How many towns are there in this state?
Three fifty-one.
Couple hundred. So this is what's normal, and, you know, lawyers fight, and that's why the courts never run out of business. And the judges fight all the way up to Supreme Court. We go to presidential election, decide over one swing vote. So people have opinions. Lawyers fight back and forth. So laypeople can read something, and some people, like, read the black letter of the law and interpret it literally, when it has another intended meaning. So I hear what Joe's saying. I don't wanna make a mountain out of a molehill. But if you're at an impasse, there's a stalemate, and you need, and your board can't define something in the bylaw, I think it's reasonable. We had a heated debate here on what, you know, you could do with a revolving fund, and whether or not you could transfer the funds, or you gotta close it out, right? I don't know what the lawyer charged us for that opinion, but we resolved it and put it to bed. And sometimes you need that impartial opinion from somebody that is in the municipal law area. They might tell you in five minutes or less, "This is it, and that's the end of it."
At this point in time, it's...
But if you need that, I think that resource ought to be made available to not just the Board of Selectmen, but if it helps serve the public by maintaining stability in the library. If it's a couple hundred bucks, I'm not gonna sweat out a couple hundred bucks.
At this point in time, it's getting later on. We can sit here and beat this thing to death. My recommendation is, my recommendation is, we hired a selectman secretary. Me as the chairman of the board, if the board goes with me, and if it's okay legally, which Denise is the legal person, I would like to see if I can't get Cassandra to take this on, your questions, your clarifications that you need, you present them to me, I'll present them to Cassandra, she'll present them to Town Council. Can that be done legally?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Well, I mean, I'm asking you legally, is it, do you think... What I'm trying to do is, I don't want to have a trustee, and I don't want to have another person on the other side. I'm trying to find a neutral party person that can put this together.
Okay.
And hopefully, everyone's gonna be happy at the set of it. You guys, if you want to meet with the parties that are, have left, you guys want to come in, you all want to sit down, come up with a list, what you want to ask the Town Council, and we'll have Cassandra either do it in letter form, or she can call them, or what have you. And I gotta clarify this with the board. I know you've been trying to talk, and...
I just have, do I have to go up?
No, that's okay.
Can you hear me from here?
Sure.
I have, I have one, one thing. We need to clarify an employee who's on probation for six months. Should they be changing out positions that worked, worked wonderfully? Adult Services Coordinator was the biggest part, the very biggest part of our library. And second of all, I think, from what I see, the difference is, we worked as a board, we went to the MBLC for questions, anyone can, that's what they're there for, we pay a consortium fee. And several meetings recently, we hear, the finance director said, the finance director said, I met with the finance director. The finance director told us this, the finance director wants it this way. It's like, okay, why have a board? Why have a board if you have a town employee making all the decisions?
And again, I went through these roles, right? And we put this back together again, everyone needs to do their roles and stay within their roles.
Exactly.
And I will say one other thing, is you guys go out and spend nine months and find a director, and the director comes in, and the director's gonna run the library and do her job, she should be allowed to do her job. And if you have a new chairman, vice chairman, they should be allowed to do their job, and people shouldn't be meddling with each other's business. And all I can say is, I'm not gonna sit here and try and resolve this. I'm saying that we hired a selectman secretary for a reason. I think this would be a good point. It's, she's gonna be partial. You guys put the questions together, we'll get them to her, we'll get them answered. In the interim, I asked, me, asked as the chairman of the board, if you guys could sit with the people who have quit, have resigned, I can tell you something right now, I've had conversations with them. Each and every one of those persons would love to be on that board today. They didn't leave because they didn't like the board. They left because things weren't working right. And I just asked, tried to work with them. They were all smart people, they all loved that library, and I think they could really put a good piece back in there. So hopefully, we can leave here tonight. We'll do our part, you do your part. In the interim, get me that list, and that's all I can say. And hopefully, we can put it together.
Do you want it in the form of a motion to...
Sure. I'm gonna need it.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to allow the Library Trustees to come up with questions, present it to the chairman, and get Town Council involved to hear out some of their concerns and questions.
And the concerns would be probably based on the bylaws. We can't, we can't go to them for nitty-gritty stuff.
Well, bylaws and Mass General Law.
Right. I don't want to get into nitty-gritty fighting amongst each other. Just, that's the important thing. Okay. Any other discussion?
Roll clarity.
Joe, any other discussion?
Open discussion.
I did one item. I think that it's, it sounds like we, that many of the people that were on the board left the board because the director's role was not defined, or we disagreed on the director's board. That, in my, at least for me, and I see several people shaking their heads, was not the reason why we quit the library, because we know that disagreements happen, and you have to work through them and come up to a consensus, and then stick with it.
Right.
Ours was that we weren't working together, that when we all got together and said, "Let's work together, let's respect one another, and not be going around and talking to people as if you were the part of the board," we said, "Let's stop doing that," and people didn't. They kept...
They did not stop doing that.
No, they kept going to talk to...
And the problem's not gonna go away. If we can go to Town Council, we can get all your answers, and I can't sit here and stop that. They can't sit here and stop that. It's gonna have to be something internal, or the problem's gonna be rerouted out of there, that the problem, where it's going. That's all I can say.
And that's why we're not... So I have a question. So to make the appointments of the three people that have applied for the openings, you're asking, you're suggesting we table that?
I am, I am only the chairman, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I am not myself going to me vote on that tonight. I don't think it's...
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
You're gonna put more people in a bad situation.
I'm gonna put more people in a bad situation. I just don't think it's just right. I think it's gonna be tabled for tonight. I want to put it on hold, and I want to get this up and running again. And like I said, we'll get your answers for you. Hopefully, you guys can get together with the other cohort, if they're willing to talk. If they're not willing to talk, they're not willing to talk.
So, you know, that becomes also an open meeting, because it's then a quorum. So then it's a, you know, open to open meeting law and discussion and minutes.
So would that be a problem?
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
I don't think it would be a problem, because you're talking about library issues, you're talking about the bylaws, you're coming up with a list. We have asked you to do that.
Yep.
And I don't see that's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
I don't. And you're legal, am I out to speak in my solvency?
No, I mean, it would only classify as open meeting law unless you're discussing particular people.
Which shouldn't be done.
And then you'd have to follow the exceptions.
If you do that, it's gonna end up in litigation. So stay shy of names, and I don't think it should be a meeting about names.
No.
I don't think it should be a meeting about the past. It should be about a meeting about the future, and getting that thing to operate the right way. Forget the past. Let's put the past behind us tonight. We'll walk out of here tonight. Past is behind us. Let's move forward. Let's rebuild this thing and get it up and running. You know what I mean?
Ed has a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion on the floor?
I'll second it.
Second it. All in favor?
I'm against that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. We have one against and four-four. All right. We've taken enough time. Like I say, hopefully, I shed some light on this, or the board shed some light on this tonight, and hopefully, we can put it together.
Well, we, we're not, we're not done. On the issue of the people that were presented for appointments, that was not part of this motion.
No, it was tabled.
I tabled it.
Well, you need to vote to table it, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So does someone want to make a motion to table it?
And make sure there's a discussion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I think we're making the wrong mistake, the wrong move. I think it's a mistake.
I don't think that, once you have a motion to table, you can't discuss it. You have to take a vote. According to Robert's Rules of Order.
Oh, let's take a vote.
Not, not, motion to table, not discuss it.
Right.
Okay. So we're gonna go to vote? Vote to table?
I'm against that.
Table it.
Four against one. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for reminding me. I'll read the book. Good.
Good.
Okay, so- So, we are moving on from the library trustees, I'm sorry, we're late, it's not that bad. We have at seven thirty, John Osborne, Bagnell School Committee coming in to discuss the project. John, if I can ask you to use the podium and give me all your information?
We already have the-
Given you the proposal, and now the new sheet on top, and so you can compare the, the, uh, the, the estimate and the engineering estimate. Um, we would like you to look, if you would, at the two and see that-
The meme and all that.
Oh, John Osborne, Three Pleasant Street, Chairman of the Bagn- Bagnell School Building Committee. Um, as you can see, if you look at the two sheets, you see the estimates are within reason. I think the engineering figures are somewhat high, depending on how hungry the vendors will be. I think we can bring them down a little bit. We just recently received an estimate on the, um, well, and it comes down to be about fourteen point two thousand. So, I'm a little under there, but, you know, we're within the ballpark, we're certainly within, um, the contingency that we've got in the, in the document. So, what I'd like you gentlemen to do is to look at the two sets of figures and see that they are reasonably comparable, and then we'll discuss anything that you'd like to do. However, I must point out to you that I had a somewhat disturbing telephone call this afternoon, when Louise informed me that, well, we thought we had two hundred and thirty thousand in the school building account. Apparently, we only have one hundred and two thousand left, so, that was needless to say, somewhat discombobulating. I, I'm not too happy about that, but, um, we have to find a way around that problem by, I suspect, applying for CPA funds. But it does mean we will have a delay, so, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is.
Unfortunately, when you have a delay, costs go up.
Of course, that's right, that is correct.
I got a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
So, we haven't actually voted to even move this money yet.
No.
So, if we're gonna move the money, if I'm correct when I say this, it's gonna have to either be moved under a fall town meeting, it's gonna need to go into an account, it's gonna need to be set aside, and we're gonna need, we're gonna need, to need them to know, yeah, sure, the dollar amount that's gonna be moved, it sounds like a hundred and two today. I am still, me is still one hundred percent on board with this, I'm on board with the pavilion, I'm on board with the fields, I'm on board with the project, hundred percent, it's a good thing. Um, I still say it should be the summer program money, it should still be the summer program project with you guys running it, it's what you guys do best. I just, I'm unsettled a little bit that it could end up as a soccer field, and they may, you know, I'm not saying, I don't wanna have it down the road, well, hey, that's our field, you can't go down there.
I have been assured by Steve Merrill that that will not be the way it is.
Okay.
He's open to negotiation and discussion with other parties, he is not wedded to holding the field in his purview only.
Okay, um, so, I know there was some discussion on moving money, or having you guys get the okay to move money to get the, to engineering done? Are you still needing that approval?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not sure I want to spend fifteen thousand dollars until I can see that the whole money is available for this project. In other words, until I've got the additional CPA funds, which will total somewhere around a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand,
Yep.
Then we haven't got a project. I mean, we've got money that we can spend on, say, the pavilion and the well-
Yep.
But we really, we can make efforts to, to, to move forward, as long as you guys decide that the proposal is acceptable to you. If it isn't, then obviously, we don't have a project, then the issue goes away.
Right.
But if you do decide, then what I would like to do is to probably pursue that angle of spending money in regards to the well and, and the, um, and the pavilion, although I must be honest, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss this with my committee, because I only was informed this afternoon about this development. So, I, I feel somewhat, uh, in, in a difficult situation, I don't wanna speak for the committee when we really haven't discussed it.
Right, right.
So, that's my viewpoint, if we can forward, go forward, fine.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm not trying to be the bearer of bad news, or trying to put a clamp on this project, 'cause I'm definitely in favor of it. What would happen if we did it in bits and pieces?
Well, we can-
So, if we have a hundred and something thousand, we do the well, we do the, uh, most important, the field, or whatever. I don't know how well, and it might go well, going back to the town people, it's the school, so they probably would say yes, but whatever. We always seem to go to the town people for more money, more money, more money, especially on tax time. So, is it best we get this project moving with what we have on hand right now? And then, at a later date, go back and say we need more money, or would you guys just wanna put the thing through as a lump sum? I, I think it would be better to hit the town people in bits and pieces, get the project rolling, and then grow with it. I don't know if I wanna hit 'em right away with a, another hundred thousand dollars on-
Well, if it's CPA funds, I don't see, that should be a serious issue.
Right.
I mean, they do have, my understanding is they have a million dollars in their account, so-
Yeah, true.
I don't think we're really squeezing them too hard at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm with you.
Go ahead. So, when I heard about the, the funds, I was also disappointed. I was under the assumption that we had two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in there to move over, that would basically take care of the whole project that we had been discussing, fields, pavilion, water, maintenance, lights, whatever we were trying to do, right? So now, that's basically cut in half, and it's not a hundred and two, right, it's ninety-eight. Because we wanna leave money in there for emergencies, or-
Right.
Keep a slush fund, or whatever it is, so now we're at ninety-eight thousand, right?
Plus the thirty-three.
Plus the thirty-three.
Which comes from our account.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so, I'm in pretty much agreement with Bill that we should start to do something, we should move the funds, because they gotta get moved anyways, right? And we should start looking at getting something down the line. Now, there's gonna be an order of how the project's gonna have to go, right? You're not gonna put the fields in, and then roll everything on top of it to go and put a pavilion and a well, and anything else, the lights, or whatever else is gonna be put in there, right? So you wanna do all the infrastructure first, which is not what anybody wants. People want the fields fixed, I want the fields fixed, it's been like that for forty years, it's terrible, but what's another year? Right, let's get everything in place first, so we don't ruin the fields after we spend a hundred thousand dollars to fix the fields.
Well, it seems to me that, um, you're right, if we get the CPA funds for the balance of this project, then we would be prepared to spend fifteen thousand on the engineering. The, the engineering is essentially for the field.
Right.
And, uh, I think we can manage to do the pavilion without too much engineering there. But I, we might spend a little bit, but not too much.
Yeah, just found out today at three thirty that, or, you know, a hundred and something thousand dollars short on it.
Right.
And you heard me, I'm kinda vocal, and, uh-
I've noticed that.
I've been crying for financial reports, and we don't get 'em, we don't get good numbers. Uh, I was critical, not of the program and how it treats children, but just in the way it was managed from a financial perspective. And then here you see, right, you guys go off on a wild goose chase, putting together numbers for a quarter of a million dollar project, only to find out you got half a loaf in the, uh, in, in the, in the bread box.
That's correct.
So, I'm very upset about that, but I've been told my constituents to keep the volume down, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, shout quietly on that issue, but I think it's pretty pathetic that we come here today and we got a hundred and two in the kitty. So, notwithstanding that, okay, those fields need to be done, that Bagnell Elementary School should be the crown jewel of this town. Schools equal property values on your house. It's the reason people move in and out of towns is the schools are good, or they're great. You want great schools, or you wanna be mediocre? There's, there's no need to procrastinate getting those fields done, they should've been done yesterday, okay? And I'm not gonna, I've only been in town ten years here, so you're not gonna come here and, you know, tell everybody how to live. But from my perspective, I don't know any other elementary school where they play in a sand pit, overgrown with weeds. I think it's poor, okay? I'm not gonna criticize the administration and the schoolteachers and that, don't take me the wrong way. That needs to be done, because it needs to be done, that oughta be a priority. The kids come first, my kids, your kids, and you know what? There's a ripple effect, there's ramifications to you, if your school is, is fantastic, that's the image, that is the reflection on Groveland, you care about the school, don't you? So, I want it done yesterday, I'm a, a new member to CPA, I don't know if that makes me, uh, conflicted here, if it's just a combination of interests, but if I could wield some power on that. There's a meeting, and it's open to the public, it was backed up for new projects, if you wanna bring that before the CPA, you know you got my back.
Well, I did take the initiative today to write to, um, the chairman, I think it's Mike Dempsey, asking what's the procedure to request money, so, um, I haven't heard from him yet, but, but I hope to pursue that.
There's money in that account, there's, I believe, a million, uh, six hundred thousand dollars. His buddy there, you know what, it was a false hope that there was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars there. Again, I have yet to see a financial statement on that pr- program, let alone anything else, and I've been hollering for it. So you know what, we can't make good decisions running this town without good numbers, it's garbage in, garbage out. And I'm sorry that you go skipping down the road, you do all the work, only to find out before you come back here, we're missing a hundred and something grand. So, I support your, your project. It, it, it seems, you know, a lot, it took us a quarter million dollars to plant grass, but I guess it's a lot of grass, and it's more than that. You need a spread for system, you need a way to keep it going, there's a maintenance cost to that. As far as the soccer field goes, the Board of Selectmen still has control over that, it's town property. There is a lease over there with the school district, okay? But outside of the school hours, the Board of Selectmen has control over leasing that, and it could be permitted, permitted on a, on a, uh, annual or a seasonal basis. So there's no problem with soccer coming in, or any other organization applying to say, we wanna use it to do this, and then it's just a scheduling matter. So I think the more, the merrier, get people to work together, and I saw the proposal that they wanna put some money on. The, the town budget was fifteen million, and I don't think it has a line item for recreation, you know? It's user fees that pay for youth sports and recreation in town, it's not tax dollars that pay for that, other than, they can't do it alone on infrastructure. So you pay for the infrastructure, and basically, soccer moms and dads are paying-
Correct.
To maintain that, it, it's, it's taxpayer friendly, it's, it's the users end up putting the bill for that. And it's reasonable that the seven weeks for the summer program, that they kick in on a pro rata allocation basis, that's reasonable, and you can hammer out the details of that, and who's gonna cost you or what, but, I, I sup- I support your plan.
Ken, can I ask you a question, did you get these tonight?
What's that?
Is that what you were looking for?
Uh, those are, those are the, the budget items, you know, I, I, again, you know, I just got back from four days vacation.
I didn't know, I just thought this was, I didn't know. Okay, so, I think, let, let me listen to Dave talk, and then, then Mr. Wood wants to talk.
Chairman would like to speak for him.
One more thing before I drop it.
Okay, well, quick.
At some point in time, at some point in time, I would like to see a beginning balance with zero, and I wanna see how much money that summer program collected and what it spent, and who it spent it on. I mean, I, you know, where did the money go?
It's in here.
It's in here.
You know?
It's in here.
Again, I get it in the eleventh hour, I'm sorry, but you know, it's just-
Jim would like to speak.
You don't-
Yeah.
All right, Ken, I'm gonna let Tim talk, and then, okay.
Jim Day, Two Cottles Ferry Lane, member of the Bagnell Building Committee. So here's my anger at this, since May, we have been coming to discuss this, and since May, the figure that we've been talking about has been up in the two fifty range. And Matt was sitting here, and I was at that meeting at the end of June, where he talked about how much money was gonna be in that account. My question is, as a parent of children, and my daughter is at the Bagnell Summer Program, so my hard-earned money is going to that program, and I've been told for three to four months what that money was in there. And this committee has worked all summer long with that figure, that was the number we were told about for three months. And I'm angered now, and I feel disservice to these kids, that we've been working to try to give them this in the backfield, this number is what has been talked about. How do we come here today, all of a sudden, and now the number is changed by that much? And that's my question, what happened? Where is the, where was the money we were talking about all summer? That's what I'd like to know.
Right, and, and, and I don't know, I don't know if you can answer that, Denise, with them, what's going on?
Well, so, we're still paying bills on the summer program up through this warrant, so that's why I didn't have a correct number. I can tell you, looking at what came in, the summer program spent out more than it took in this year. I don't know why, that's a question for Matt, who's coming before the board at the next selectman's meeting.
And I think that should be a question, is there, they're paying no utilities on that building, they pay nothing at all, so what is my money going to?
This would be the first year.
How can you lose money on, on a, on a free overtime?
Jim, this would be the first year that they are in a deficit of funds.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And I don't know, I don't know, I don't know for how three months the money is that far off. I could see you being a little, I could see it being a little far off, but not that far off.
We were looking, well, this is my understanding, we were looking at a total revenue, not knowing the expenditures haven't been removed from that.
And Matt sat here in June, June twenty ninth.
He said seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Would come out of the total, it would be down around-
Two thirty, two-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He was gonna add sixty thousand to it.
He said he was gonna add sixty thousand to it.
Said he was gonna add sixty to it, so I thought it was gonna be two hundred plus another sixty, we'd have two seventy.
But he's not, you know, I don't have the answer, I'm not the financial person here. He is coming in, so come back to the meeting when he comes in, but my, what I'm looking for is if that kinda money got spent in a short period of time, we got a problem. So, did they go crazy because-
There was excess, yeah.
We brought them in here, I don't know, I, I, I'm-
No, I, I understand that, I think like it was talked about back in June, I think has to be addressed as an oversight issue with-
Right.
What's going on there-
Right.
That has to be addressed there.
Right.
And I'm feeling right now, as I, you know, mentioned earlier, I don't really wanna waste more of my ti- I spent my whole summer, I got my kids, I'm doing stuff, and I'm wasting my time putting this proposal together and working with this committee that also, they don't have kids at the school, they're giving up their time to do that, thinking that that number's out there, and now we're being asked to prolong it again for CPA funds and whatever else, and give up our time, you know?
And, and that's why I said when I first started talking, that's why I said, I was thinking back in May, we would've had this conversation, we would've had the conversation, let's move the money. We had the conversation, we figured out how it could be moved, and here we are, like you said, so many months later, and we're still talking about moving that money, and now money's missing. I'm the type of person, I wanna get something done sooner than later. That's why I was hoping to leave here tonight, and, and we can come up with a conversation, whatever money's there, we have now, we'll find the money that got lost later, but I think we need to put, put a stop hold on this thing and get this thing moving. I think we should, I think, you know, what's gonna happen if, next year, if we don't get this done now, we might be down again, down bad.
No one's saying they don't wanna do the project, we all wanna do the project, I think it's great for the school, but-
It is, a hundred percent.
Let's move what we have, get it into an account that we can get to-
Let's get into an account, let's get it moving.
And then go back and find out why that money's missing.
And that's, and that's up to the board, you guys will decide whether or not to move the fund, I think my feeling in it, on it is, if you move the money, do whatever you want with it, or the board with, but, who's gonna know? I, I don't know that six months from now, something else isn't gonna come out of the blue telling us we don't have this or that, and we can't do this.
Well, if it's moved, then we have it.
Right, but we can't do a field with that money that's there.
No, no, you can't do that.
That's what I mean, and we don't know if we're gonna get the rest to do that.
No, you have to do the, the step project, you have to do the well, and you have to do the pavilion, and then get-
And that's my, that's my concern.
CPA funds for next fall.
Thanks.
I'd just like to adjec one thing. Please, we'll be back on the twenty-first, we'd like you to make a decision for this proposal, up or down, one way or the other.
The proposal that's in front of us right here tonight?
Yes, but you do supposedly have to wait until the fifteenth for any other proposals, and it's many.
Yeah, I agree.
So on the twenty-first, you make a decision, hopefully, up or down, which one is gonna take when you pay.
Right.
Kim Jackson, Ten Park Street, I'm the vice chair of the Bagnell School Building Committee for the last five years. Question, I believe, that we were looking for is, um, do you back us in spending roughly fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars out of our existing funds to get the engineering study done? The reason being, if an engineering study is done, and the money comes, shows up two week, two months from now, it's good. If the engineering study's done, and the money doesn't show up until next spring, it's still good, it's an engineering study, it, it, you get all the nuts and bolts started. Does the board wish us to expend that fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars to get the engineering study rolling now? Or would you rather wait? Or would you rather wait until the official meeting on the twenty first to give us a yay or a nay on that?
Mike, uh, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so the engineering study, I'm, assume, is only to do field work?
Correct.
Not the infrastructure?
It's the whole site plan, isn't it?
Well, for the whole class.
Is it a site plan?
It would be a layout, it would be, uh, soil analysis, it would give us the proposed location for the well, uh, where we could possibly do a wet tap on the existing line that we put in to loop the system, to feed, uh, a general location of where the pavilion was gonna be going.
All right, so there's more involved than just the fields? That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes, yes, it is basically, it's the, it's the, we're proposing two fields and a pavilion. The pavilion, we have itemized out as a separate item under Phase Two, which is around fifty-five thousand dollars by the time you, the structure, erection, picnic tables, uh, you know, run some power out there, the whole nine yards. But, the, either way, whether the engineering study, study is started now, or in the spring, or after the meeting on the twenty first, we're just looking to see if the board wants us to pursue that.
I wanted to get a clarification on exactly what it was, the, the site plan defines it a lot better. Because now what we're looking at is a change in course, right? Because now we're looking at not just funding the whole thing and going all for it. Now we gotta do steps because we don't have the funds. But if the site plan is saying it includes everything that you just went over, great, now we have an idea of what-
So, what you, you, you see, what you have for existing funds, you could utilize, say, fifty percent of the engineering study on the first big field, uh, getting the well in, getting the main drainage in. And then when we secure the, when the second lump of money is secured, then you could finish the second field and pavil- pavilion.
I'm under the assumption that you're only gonna get enough money for the pavilion and the well to start off with.
That, I believe the, the primary objective, please, anybody on the committee and soccer people, please, uh, would be, the primary would be the, the well to support the field and at least one field. The pavilion was a, we had put that as a-
Add-on.
As a Phase Two item, secondary item. It is definitely gonna be utilized by the soccer, it's gonna be utilized by the Bagnell School kids during the day. It's gonna be used, utilized by the people doing the, the gardening program, everything.
Can I ask a question? On the twenty fifth, we're gonna maybe have other proposals.
Twenty first.
Whatever it is, the date.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
So, we may have another proposal come before us, whatever. So, if we say go ahead, which I think it's a good idea to get engineering, to get it moving. But what happens if you have your proposal, doesn't make it, we have to go with their proposal, now we, are we-
We basically, we basically wasted fifteen thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Well, wait until, wait until the twenty first.
Let me just finish. My other question is fifteen thousand dollars for an engineered plan, i- is that a dead end number or is that number a high number? You know what I'm getting at?
It's, it's very close.
It's gonna cost fifteen thousand, a buck with a, with a site plan, with everything on there?
Yeah, and it'll, it'll be a fully licensed surveyor stamped plan.
He'll survey the site for that money, he'll, he'll stake out where the buildings are going, he'll, he'll, he'll have where the pipes are going.
Wells, drains, irrigation.
Wells, drains.
General location, they'll work-
That will all be part of that fifteen thousand.
And then, and they'll work with like the, whoever the successful well drilling company, so forth and so on.
Have you guys talked directly to a well company yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so you got, you got numbers on that?
Fourteen point two.
How, how deep do they think they're gonna need to go? Do you know?
Five hundred feet there.
Five hundred feet. And is it a commercial well or is it gonna be a residential? So, it's a commercial well. So, do you, do they think a residential well would make it back there or no?
Won't have enough recovery.
No, it won't have enough recovery. As it is, they have to time the zone so that the well can recover, so.
Right, so, so it won't be, it won't be a big, residential won't cut it because they're gonna have to time it longer.
So, I have-
So, it doesn't, once it, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of water down there then?
Well, they don't know how much water's down there until they start drilling.
So, what I'm getting at, and this is how it works, and I'm not trying to be the bearer of bad news. They can go five hundred feet and come to you guys and say, hey, guys, guess what? I haven't hit water yet.
Absolutely.
And you can go another hundred, fifty, two hundred, whatever, and that price is gonna up, 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 up.
Well, at that point, you could bracket or there's other options you could do.
Bracket, exactly, right, right. So, what I'm saying is, just make sure that you build more costing. And, and the other thing is, I was down there years ago and I took care of those fields for bucks. There's a lot of loom down there, areas there isn't a lot of loom, you know what I mean? I think personally, I think we should get going with the infrastructure first. Now we have this problem on the twenty first, we need to wait till these other proposals come in. I mean, I hate to see this thing get stalled any longer, but.
Yeah, so, I-
I have an opinion about that.
If we move ninety-eight thousand from the funds over to another fund that we can control, you have thirty-three, right? That gives you one thirty-one, minus fifteen for engineering, that's one sixteen, minus fourteen for the well, that's one oh-two. That's what you have for a field, a pavilion.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't cover both fields.
No.
But it would cover one-
One field.
And still give you some money still left in the kitty. I would not propose building one and a half fields. We'd build one correct field, you have the second field laid out for where it's gonna go.
That's with maintenance and everything? That one oh-two will cover the one field top to bottom?
Oh, and then-
But not maintenance.
But not maintenance.
Not maintenance, not watering, not, that hasn't come into a discussion, no watering.
The water's coming from the well.
Well, I mean, if that's what we go, yeah, we're gonna have there, but who's gonna move it and maintain it? That's another whole story, but-
You have a hundred and two to, to move with.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do we need, do we need, to go back with Dan said a minute ago, do we need to put a field in right away? When I'm talking, a field as in a softball or baseball field, can we just get the project to get grass, to get it leveled, to get sprinklers, to get it watered, and get a pavilion, and then build with the fields at a later date? Just to try and get that place so it's not a bombshell?
No, the, the problem with that is the amount of dirt work that needs to be done to, I'm gonna put it basic Lehman's terms, you get rid of some high spots, you get rid of some low spots, we get, we got some terrain, you got gravel, some places you gotta foot a loom.
Right.
What's it gonna end up doing is bringing in a piece of equipment, you salvage all your loom, you stockpile it, you lay your proper base in, you put your fabric down, you lay your, lay your loom, I mean, you're in the business. And then you bring in your sprinkler guy and you do, and he does is the big field.
Right.
We have two different sized fields, a number ten and a number twelve.
Correct.
And then, and it's done properly, and then you always leave yourself an access to get to your second field.
I'm gonna go back to what I said again, and I'm not trying to be an idiot here, but give them something. And I understand, that work has to be done anyway. Whatever kind of field it turns into, that work's gotta be done. That's the infrastructure.
You bet.
It's gotta be done. And that place has gotta be leveled, and right them on a loom, what happened? Now, if you're only gonna do one field this year, you leave the other one alone, probably have to do the whole thing at one time. Am I correct?
But, but it's, um-
What I'm saying is, are we gonna go to the expense right now for a softball field or a baseball field or whatever? Can we just get grass in there and get a pavilion in there? That's all I'm saying. And if we, if we're down on the money end of the, at least we're giving the kids a place to go, we're giving them some grass and what have you. Hold on, he wants to talk.
The budget numbers that we have gone over as a committee, we're looking at roughly about a hundred and thirty thousand for both fields.
Okay.
Then we had another fifty some odd thousand dollars for the pavilion structure. We had set aside seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars to buy a lawn mower to maintain the field. I mean, it's, it's all itemized out there in front of you, uh, for totaling out around two hundred and thirty some odd thousand. That included, uh, the fifteen thousand for the well and so forth and so on. To put the pav- pavilion first and taking a fifty thousand dollar chunk out of your hundred and sixteen-
Hundred and two, hundred and two.
Hundred and two. That nine, that fifty-two thousand dollar chunk would not be enough left to complete the number ten, twelve, number ten or number twelve field.
Right, but, but I'm-
But is it enough to level it?
Right.
And get it all prepared for the whole field?
Listen, the summer program's gonna use-
That's a possibility, we have not looked at it-
Sure.
Okay.
At that aspect.
The, the way, the way I'm looking at it is that project is, and the money is coming from the summer program. I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna be steadfast, the money should be geared toward the summer program first. I look at the pavilion and I look at fields where they can play on. Yes, then the Bagnell School kids should be able to, we should be thinking of them as well. So, not, I, I'm not looking for softball and all this other stuff and making this glamorous thing right away. I wanna get it to the point where they can use it to school and the summer program.
That's something that-
That's what I'm looking at.
What, I don't honestly have an answer for that. That's something that we would have to look at-
Okay.
And get back to you-
I think it's gonna come in cheaper.
In, in a meeting in a week and a half from now.
Okay, I think Joe's been trying to talk.
I've been trying to talk to him.
All right, well, he hasn't talked to him.
Go ahead.
Been doing a lot of listening tonight.
Dan, Dan can, go ahead, Dan.
You wanna talk, Joe, you don't?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, I'm not giving you the, I'm the chair, I'm giving you the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, gentlemen. You guys have done one of the biggest, most complicated projects in, in our district.
I thought the, the school turned out real well.
Yeah, you did a great job, so, um, I have great confidence in your abilities. I have several issues and concerns. If I'm sitting on the CPA, if, I'm, I'm not on the, uh, Community Preservation Committee, but if I was, as I was last year in October, and I'm presented with a proposal that says, by the way, um, this is our proposal, and by the way, we've already, the Board of Selectmen has already approved us spending fifteen thousand dollars to do a study. Now, you do what you want with this, but, you know, it seems a little bit of arm twisting to me, number one. Number two, first of all, we haven't identified exactly why the money is a lot less than what it was a few weeks ago, as Mr. Day mentioned. We, we need to understand that. That number might change, but let's, for the heck, probably, I'm sure it's a hundred and two thousand or thereabouts, and there's probably really good reasons why it's, it's that level. We haven't even moved that. The only way to move that is a special town meeting in October. A special town meeting is not the Board of Selectmen making a decision, it's the townspeople. A hundred people have to show up, we might have seven hundred people show up, and they might say, no. So, we're gonna approve, I'm absolutely against approving anything at this moment, including a study, until A, we find out what happened, B, we ask the town in October to approve, whatever we can approve, to move into a special fund, which we'll gladly earmark for that purpose. And then C, let the CPA do its thing through its due process, which is a totally independent body from this, which also brings in townspeople to make a decision, is this what we wanna do? Because what I know we are going to hear is, I thought you guys were gonna do this with Bagnell money, and now you're coming to the town, even though it's CPA. It's gonna be a problem for some people. There will be some people that will say, okay, this is a great project, you came up short, let's do it in a few years when you can do it with all Bagnell money only. Some people will say that. And you know what? They have a voice, they need to have that ability to say that. We'll give them that, that ability if we do it in steps. If we stop piecemealing this thing and putting fifteen thousand dollars down, we're, we're sending the wrong message. We're telling the people that are gonna attend to the special town meeting, uh, we really hope you're gonna approve this 'cause we've already put fifteen grand down. And then we're telling the CPA, we really hope you guys are gonna do it. You know, if you don't wanna do it, that's okay. That's not good public policy. We're not letting the pro- I'm sorry it happened to your kids. It happened to my child. We, he missed the opportunity to be a, um, a star athlete in track in his last year in college, you know? In fact, they couldn't even have meets in his year, you know? And then a couple of years later, you know, he saw this beautiful field. At this point, this is a great project, we just have to wait how people wanna fund it. Do they wanna split it with the CPA? Or do they wanna wait till you guys have enough money in the kitty to do it with all summer program money only? If we stop, you know, uh, piecemealing it and putting deposits down, that's not good public policy, that's my opinion.
Joe, I'd just like to address that for a minute. Um, this surplus that we've generated in the summer program has come, I believe, from having other residents outside of Groveland be part of that program. And there's been some discussion as to whether the fees are too high or too low or whatever. And if you want to have an excess in there, you're gonna have to keep the fees and you're also gonna have to keep having residents from outside of Groveland.
I'm all in favor of that.
Well, you know, there are ramifications to that and, and you need to, so if you're gonna fund it that way, it's going to be troublesome, I think.
Now, in terms of the work that you folks have to do, honestly, I mean, you did the work. This, you know, this just has to be relabeled for CPA, you know, consideration.
Well, that's what we plan on doing, but, but-
And you should do that, you probably should.
But, but I, I, I would agree with you, until we've got the meeting of the town approving the money, I, I am, I agree with you. I'm somewhat reluctant to be spending fifteen grand on, on the proposal. I think you're right, as soon as the money does indeed come approved at the special town meeting, then I think we can begin.
Maybe then, maybe even wait till CPA says yes.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll let you talk.
Can I make one, one final comment? This project got its initiative from excess funds from, that were generated on the Bagnell School property by parents of Bagnell School students, and then there was an influx of out of town students in the last few years. My only strong feeling is when you receive possible other proposals, that the funds solely stay on and used for the Bagnell School and its thirty-four acres that it sits on of town property. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Melissa Covey, Twenty Union, and I represent, we're new soccer tonight. So, first, I just wanna say, um, when you do go to, to, you know, talk, discuss the proposal, read her over the proposals and everyone else's proposals. So, I got to work with these gentlemen this summer on this proposal, and I was just, um, completely impressed with their knowledge of the town, of the school, I mean, everything, of other schools and other towns. And it, they're, they were amazing and just a wealth of knowledge. But we can promise you that this project would never take a decade or half a decade to do. This group is committed and will make sure that this isn't something that, you know, you're having to come to us and bring us in two years, three years, four, five years from now saying, hey, where's this? Where's that? Who's taking care of this? Who's taking that care of that? We have volunteers lined up, you know, to help with maintenance in the future. We, we have it all kinda figured out. And of course, it still is a proposal and has to be read and decided on, and you have to look at other proposals and sort of totally get that. But just so you do know, this is a, a great dedicated group who would make sure that it, it, everyone stayed focused and that the project came to a conclusion and finalized in a reasonable amount of time. Second, I, 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 as a parent of three kids at Bagnell, kindergarten first and third grade, so I'm gonna be around for a while. They're there, um, that I, I really, I, 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 I hope that everybody gets a chance to really look into what in the world just happened because, you know, all that money, it's, what is it, a hundred and, a hundred thousand, a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and sixty thousand dollars? I mean, we don't know the exact numbers yet, but I, I think it'd be fair to, everybody, parent, committee members, everybody to know where in the world that amount of money disappeared to. I mean, they, maybe someone said, yeah, we can spend more, but that much more is over, money that was collected over a ten year period to, you know, be cut in half, and someone really needs to be accountable for that completely. Um, so, I just ask that everybody-
Hopefully, they didn't spend it all.
I, I, I'm, hopefully, there's a mistake.
I hope it's not spent because-
And that would be wonderful. But, yeah, I-
Same one year.
I, with, with three little people at that school, and we love Bagnell, um, I just ask everyone to really figure out what in the world just happened there, 'cause this, this was a total shock to-
It was a total shock to everybody.
Everybody. We're an email, and I'm like, why?
Yeah.
Where?
I mean, for three months, we've been looking at two forty, two fifty.
Yeah.
And then at three o'clock, that went down to a hundred.
Yeah, yeah, um-
We were all liberal Democrats, we had it all spent.
Yeah, right, right?
Hopefully, I don't know, I don't know how that's-
We did too.
In our minds, that was, that was a great idea, we're just gonna spend it.
I don't know how the summer program, if they did spend that kinda money in one sitting, or one, how they authorized to spend that kinda money. And I can tell you, I'd like to find out why.
I've heard nothing.
If they did, I don't know if they did or didn't, but geez, that's a lot of money for one year. They must've bought a lot of bouncy houses or something over there.
I don't know. I've heard nothing but wonderful things about the program.[1782.21]
I'm sure, I, I agree.
My kids aren't in it. My, I have a camp, they go to Camp in Maine, but, I, I mean, I've heard nothing but wonderful things, but I don't think, um, Jim's kids came home with diamond earrings from the camp, like, look what we made today. I, I, where, where does that kind of money just, but I, I, I know. There you go.
Denise has something to say.
Okay.
Did you say? Do you have something to say?
Go say it.
No, whatever. I, I would like to just say something, whatever. That's fine.
You wanna talk, you want to do this?
I wanted to talk, but-
Ladies before gents?
She can go first.
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify that I, I don't believe there's anything missing. The numbers that were thrown out were estimates on what they believed they were going to take in. So not only did they not take in what they assumed, they spent more than they took in. So I don't believe there's money actually missing. It was all estimates based on enrollments and spending. So when we paid the final invoices today-
But at the beginning of the summer, or in June, the number that was in the account was one seventy, one eighty, and then the estimate of overage going into the next year was another fifty, sixty, seventy, whatever it is.
Right. But there's no excess of overage, and they spent more. So you're, you're decreasing the overage that was in there, and you didn't add anything to it.
Right, which still means there's a huge delta between-
Correct.
The night that we sat here, the night that we sat here, it was like two thirty, minus seventy that it was gonna cost to run the season. We were down to a number, and he asked you, you guys went back, that was a pretty locked-in number, and I think that's why everyone's so perturbed right now. It was a pretty locked-in number, and we'll have our day to talk about it, but I know it was a pretty locked-in number, and I agree with everyone, and- I don't know. I, like I said, maybe there's something behind that school that I'm not seeing that costs a lot of money this year. I don't know.
Um, so, um, as far as, um, Groveland Soccer goes with the use of the fields, um, so I, I'm a parent of three, as you, I've told you. Um, I'm a sitting board member, um, for Groveland Soccer. Um, and the fields, the soccer use of the fields is kind of like just a bonus. So, I mean, a regular-sized soccer field is bigger than a football field. It's a hundred and twenty yards long and eighty yards wide. And a soccer, soccer field's massive, and we're not trying to, you know, build a stadium or anything here. Um, but, you know, the town is growing. I mean, we have a lacrosse program that's booming right now with no place to practice, and we were talking about that, you know, with the use of, you know, when the pines are ready and the Shanahan and the school. I mean, we aren't going in there putting down our flag and saying this is ours, you know? It, that is absolutely not our intention whatsoever. And as you're also, uh, working on the transition of, you know, with the Recreation Department and things like that, and, um, with that committee, um, you know, whether it's soccer or whether it's, um, a group of, um, you know, the presidents for each, for soccer, baseball, lacrosse, everyone getting together to manage fields, I mean, that's something that will, you know, come across in the future, who decides who gets to play where. Um, but our main goal right now is the kids. It's absolutely the kids. If you said, you know, soccer's never gonna be allowed to use that field, well, are the kids using the field? Are you making something so that these kids go out at resets and not get cuts from, from rocks and sand and glass and things like that? 'Cause, you know, it's our kids or our grandkids or our great-grandkids who are using that area, and it's just a mess. So, it's never, um, you know, not our, you know, field.
Right. Can I ask a couple of quick questions?
Absolutely.
Soccer is discussing to use that field, and I know it's hypothetical, 'cause we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
What, what, if you do use it, are you planning on chipping in, or are you using it for, I don't wanna have what happened with the summer program. The summer program didn't have any pay-in, no janitors paying, no fees, blah, 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 and here we are. I know it's a little bit different, but is the soccer plan on chipping in any money toward it, or are they just planning on using it?
Toward the actual building of the, of the area?
Whatever, whatever.
Um, not that I was aware of. No, I think that we were all, we had that, that two thirty, two fifty figure, and it would be set. Soccer does, will be planning with majority of maintenance at one point.
Yeah, because that, right now, over the pines, there's, there's three fields over there. There's one big one and two smaller ones. I don't know if you can fit there, but that project doesn't look like it's gonna get done, and it's, it's pretty graded and ready to go. So, that's another option. You can tell people that you're out there talking to, and say, hey, you want a field to work on, there's one over there, but we're gonna need the help. I'm not saying discard what you're doing over here, but, um, and the only reason I'm saying, it seems like the baseball got Washington Field, and certain people got the pines and what have you. I just don't know if they pay. I mean, they, I know that you have a lot of volunteers raise money for those fields.
Mm-hmm.
Will you people plan on raising money for those fields? If, if you're gonna go over there and help maintain it, I mean, it's just one thing I'm throwing out.
Um, all of our, um, money raiser, our, our fundraising is really what pays for our maintenance. Um, the, the fee, the, I mean, if your kid's paying forty-five dollars for the season, fifteen dollars goes to insurance, and another, you know, five to ten dollars go into a T-shirt.
Right.
The profits are teeny, teeny, tiny. So our, our work for, you know, Groveland Day Cow Pie Bingo, and, you know, the little things that we try to do in throughout the year.
And what we gotta get to, is we gotta get to down the road, and it's hypothetical, we're not even there yet.
Mm-hmm.
We gotta get to the point about maintenance, who's gonna care for it, 'cause I already know the protected school system-
They're not, right.
Ultimately said nothing. We're not taking care of that field, we're not doing nothing back there. So we gotta just have that discussion, who's gonna maintain this once we get this all done. And it is, it's down the road. We shouldn't even be there right now, but it's just talk, you know?
I know some of us will look forward to, you know, like, I would love to leave the house for four hours a week and go and mow a field and put the headphones on. You kidding me?
It gets old quick.
Yeah, but we have enough volunteers lined up.
Regardless of what we're gonna do, we still have to find a way to move them on.
I understand, I understand. Dan wanted to talk, and he's getting upset in the moment. Go ahead.
Monopolizing tonight.
Sorry.
Procedurally, I think we said that you can submit proposals through the twenty-first, so it's, it'd be, it's not ripe yet. It's premature to spend money when it's only, what, less than two weeks away. So I think we have to wait for that.
Okay, I'm gonna agree with that.
Uh, you know, there's always gonna be a battle over the budget. We got fifteen million dollars. If we can find money to plant grass around Town Hall, we could, it'd be better used over behind the Bagnell, in my opinion. I'd rather see it be mud out around Town Hall, and then put those resources over there. So, we can find the money in the budget for pay raises and some other things, and brand-new police cars, and all kinds of other things. And I can go through a laundry list. We, we haven't even had the battle of the budget yet. That's, that's, that's where I'm gonna, you know, you know, try to get more vocal. Okay? But there's money in there, and it shouldn't be in the, a point in negotiation, in my opinion. It should be done, 'cause you should do it. It, it's a sin, in my opinion, not to have grass behind the elementary school. They're planting weeds and rocks and grass. Come on, guys. Have some pride in Groveland. Pay the money, find it in the budget. The other thing is I'm crying for financial statements. We got a, 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 a rebound in, in the real estate market. It took a long time for Groveland even blip, uh, uh, in terms of increases. But assessments should be up, revenue should be up, but again, I'm flying blind here. I don't have any numbers. But if our revenues are up, you're telling me we can't find twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget to water grass and, and, and cut the grass over there? It's, it, it's sad. Come on, Groveland. Fifteen million dollar budget, you run the percentage on that. There's nothing in there for recreation. Pay for the kids, pay for the school. I went to a nice elementary school, and I didn't plant rocks and weeds and, and that, you know? I had better than that. My kids have worse than what I had. You know, and that's not being snobby or big-headed. They have worse than what I have. My kids are supposed to have better than I have, you know? So that's pride. It oughta be done, and if, we can't find fifteen million dollars in the budget to wring out quarters and nickels and dimes, I'm gonna find them for you, all right? I'm gonna find them for you, and you're gonna hear me all over town. If I can't get grass behind the back of that building there and figure out a way to pay for it, I'm quit.
You got people asking for fifteen here, twenty there, thirty there. That adds up to a couple hundred, a couple million, real simple.
Yeah, and you oughta have the grass there for the kids.
Everybody wants grass there. That's not the question.
It hasn't been done in thirty years. You said that yourself. You went to school there, and Joe said it's a lunar landscape. It's time we planted grass on the moon in Groveland.
I agree with you, but should you be yelling at us because we can't get grass planted there?
I'm frustrated with this board, and I'll tell you, Bill, 'cause you're asking me.
But, but don't yell at us.
It's not the board that's doing it.
We, we're trying. We sat here, we've been trying to come up with a plan.
I don't think anybody's up here said, I don't want grass.
There's money in the budget, so you, what I, or excuse me, is we cry poor mouth that there's no money, but you'll find the budget-neutral transfers. I've been watching the TV for the last few years, and when you want something, that's all we got in excess, and this fund will do a budget-neutral transfer, and we get the money. So we're gonna do budget-neutral transfers on the excess and get it paid.
Dan, hold on one second. All right, flip, calm down, calm down. I'm gonna ask you one question.
Yeah.
Is there a hundred and two thousand dollars in an account somewhere in Groveland that we can be proactive, we can move the money?
I don't know, because we don't have financial records. I've been screaming for them for five months, and I'm sitting here flying blind. I don't have any numbers, and I get them a half hour before the meeting after three months.
All right, let's take a breath. Let's take a breath.
Leave.
Hey, with pleasure. You wanna sit here and bootstrap it and wing it, you wing it alone, Bill.
You're turning ragged.
Get to the next meeting. Try to have some financial reports for us.
There's one right here.
When did I get the damn thing?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
When did I? When did you get it?
Same time you did.
When was that? Twenty minutes ago before the meeting? Pathetic.
About two and a half hours.
Gotta be ashamed of yourself. This is how you run it, with no numbers, no financial data.
That's your job.
I'm going home to my family, and you can sit here and pretend like you know what's going on, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Have fun.
All right, see you later.
Apologize to all you people that worked on that, and you're on a wild goose chase, 'cause they can't get any numbers on the table. My God. You wonder why I get frustrated.
You get frustrated, 'cause you get yourself in an uproar. That's what you get frustrated about. You start off slow, and then you talk yourself into an uproar.
Bill, you pretend to know. You don't even have the information.
I pretend to know there is a hundred and two thousand dollars in an account that we can move over here to get the thing moving.
Where'd the other buck twenty go?
We just found out about it.
Next week, we're gonna talk about it. We're gonna find, I can't get these answers tonight.
Find out about it, maybe we'll get an answer, maybe we'll get an excuse.
All right, thank you.
You can have it.
If we wanna come up with an answer on the fly, somebody's left it.
Not gonna sit here and punt, just unbelievable.
Okay.
Have fun.
Thank you.
And next time, Denise, can I get some reports? Ask one forty-seven times.
They're all sitting here forty-
Forty-seven times, they asked for financial statements.
One more, make it forty-eight.
All on the table.
All right, so, now, if we can try and get this thing back, we, we have poor Mr. Jarsen sitting here. We talked to him a little while ago, but I say that we have the people coming in on the twenty-first. We really are gonna be premature to move this thing and talk about it on that behalf. Okay. To really spend fifteen thousand at this point until we have that, it's really stupid.
We can hold.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't we sit here and talk about, do we, and are we going to move the amount of money that's there into a special account so we can use it for this project before it gets changed? That's what I think we should do.
We have to move it.
That's how we should be proactive tonight.
As long as you understand that it's the townspeople that make that decision.
I agree, and it's gonna have to go to a special town meeting. I know all about that. It's going to have to go. And we're probably gonna have an October, I said it in the beginning of this meeting, we're probably gonna have a town meeting in October to move this money.
If we agree to it in consensus, and we, we wanna promote it to the townspeople, but it's the townspeople's decision to do it.
But it's not their decision tonight to make the decision to move the money. That's what I'm saying. We need to make a decision to move that money to say we're gonna have a special town meeting.
I, I, I'm not ready to make that.
You could, you could pass a motion, surely, to move the money to a special account.
It has to be done.
Pending, so that a warrant article may be written and presented to the town.
Right.
End of story.
Right. We're not actually moving the money tonight.
Right.
We're going to move it once the town special meeting says it's okay to move the money.
Still withhold that decision until other proposals come in.
But that proposal, their proposals are gonna need that money to do their proposals. If we say, those other, we wanna go, don't go with these guys, we go with these guys, we still need that hundred and two to do their proposals. We need that money.
Need to have the money put in a special account. It doesn't matter who has the project or the proposal.
Okay. Oh, that's right, in terms of the, okay, I, I apologize.
So, we just wanna get out of that fund.
I was stuck on the fifteen thousand.
No, no, no.
No, you're right. I, I would agree that if we wanna promote the concept and put it on a warrant for a special town meeting in October, for the people to divide, to decide, I'd be in agreement of that, because whether we spend on your project or somebody else's project-
Yeah, but that's the motion you've gotta pass tonight.
Potentially. I just wanna remind everybody that, you know, I, I, and, you know, I'm a parent. I have a twelve-year history with Groveland Soccer. I, I did it all too. Um, I just wanna remind people that we went into this with a project to be funded by the summer program only. Now we have to make a change, and that is, we have to use town money. Now, it is in the form of CPA potentially, but that is going to be a decision that we wanna allow the town to make.
I think we have to, I think we have to say that.
Through the town, special town meeting, and then through the, another process that brings in the public, the Community Preservation Committee.
Right. I think we have to be upfront and tell people the consequences of what has happened.
Right.
And explain it. I totally agree with you, Joe.
Nobody's happy about the situation.
We need to be transparent about it.
Right, but we have to adjust.
The point that I'm making is, let's take this in bits and pieces.
Correct.
First bit, we need to deal with-
Transfer the money.
Transfer the money in a special town meeting and say, the money is the Bagnell School project, whatever we wanna say, money. Now it gets moved into a special account. Now, we have this committee come in next week. They're gonna sit in front of us, and we're gonna say, what happened to the money? Where did it go? Explain the situation to us.
Exactly.
That's number two. That gets taken care of. Then on the twenty-first, we have another group of people come in front of us and say, we, we may not have anyone, but we may have four proposals. We're gonna look at these five proposals, yours, four, and we're gonna come up with one good one. That hundred and two is gonna be turned around and used for that. It could be two sixty-five, and we need more money. Now we go to the preservation people. I mean, it's gotta start somewhere, and we can't sit here and keep hammering, hammering the carpet about this. We've gotta start somewhere.
Correct.
And that's all I'm saying.
That's fine.
So, I don't know if you guys-
I just, I just wanna apologize to the committee for the hoops. It's ridiculous. And I know we keep moving things around, and things keep coming up, and obviously, this is a big left turn that nobody saw coming, so.
I come here for the show.
This was an awesome show, right?
I, I will say-
Did you get it?
Did you leave two dollars at the door?
You got a show, and we still have quorum.
I will say, in behalf of the town, as a chairman of the board, and the town people watching this, I didn't, it was uncalled for. I don't think it was right, and I apologize, and whatever. I'll take the blame or whatever. I'm the big boy.
No, you shouldn't take the blame.
It's just, it's ridiculous. It, it, we get off topic, and we get off topic, and we get off topic. Let's stay on topic. And I said, I'm illiterate, bits and pieces. That's how I do things, bits and pieces. The first bit is, we need to move the money. We need to have a special election, discuss that. They wanna do it, they don't. Guess you guys can spend all your time on this project and bring all these beautiful things, and guess what? Town people may, may say, forget it.
I agree, but move the money tonight.
Well, I don't know, the board, I'm, I'm willing to move the money.
I'm ready to move it.
A motion. I know, I've suggested that.
Are, are you willing to?
Sure, yeah.
Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move the ninety-eight thousand out of the Groveland Summer Program over to whatever account we can get access to.
With, with-
Can I just rephrase that for you?
It has to be in the form of a town.
You would like to have an article submitted to the special town meeting.
Right. The money's not actually gonna be moved tonight. It's gonna go on town.
You're gonna request town meeting to move the money, yes.
To move the money, yes.
Special town meeting.
So they'll request to move the money.
The board will submit an article to request town meeting to move the money, yes.
Work on trying to come up with more money when we find out if we don't have that other money, and we can take those bits and pieces and grow with them. That's all I'm saying.
If it does become something to go for, I don't think we'll have a problem getting money. We went through our addition to the school. We didn't have, the Financial Board didn't even give us favorable action. And we were able to get the town to buy into what we were showing them. And without really any trouble or effort at all, it's, it, it all came to fruition.
Right. I think that you're right on. I think that you're not gonna have much tr- trouble convincing people. I think all this really does is delay it further, which nobody wanted, obviously, and everybody's aggravated. I'm aggravated about, 'cause I would've been looking forward to getting this thing started in the fall.
Right.
Right, but now we gotta look at maybe next summer or whatever we can do.
We're all coming to terms with that, but, you know, the big picture is it's worth doing, but the project that the town needs, and this committee has proven itself, that it can get the job done and give you value for your dollars.
Yes. And the point that I'm trying to make, if we make this one step tonight, it starts the process. Yeah, in October, we maybe get the vote. I thi- I don't think the people in town are not gonna vote to fix that school and to fix that mess. So we know, most, whatever, I'm not gonna say. But anyway, that gets moved, and now we have our winter, at least to work on that dollar amount we got to work with, if it's a pavilion or if it's a field only with grass, whatever, at least we can get them kids out there in some grass, in some shade, and we're doing our thing, and it will grow with the preservation of, whatever we need to do. So, does it, do we have a motion on the floor to?
We had an amended motion.
Amended motion.
So, would you like to hear what your motion is?
Yes.
You made a motion to request an article be submitted at a special town meeting to move ninety-eight thousand dollars from the Bagnell Summer Rec revolving account to an account to spend for Bagnell exterior renovations.
And I, and I, I would like to second that.
Okay, so I gotta second? Any more discussion?
I don't want Mr. Osborne to give me the Charlie Manson stare.
While we get this going, um, all in favor, and we're gonna go with it. All in favor, okay, okay, good. So we got that done.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Sorry it took so late, and so-
We got that.[1728.14]
Just an observation, you guys work well as a four-man committee.
For the record, uh, who are you, sir, and where, what's?
Don't do that. Okay, so, moving on, we have, I'm gonna just show my pen over here.
I don't know.
I'll get you another one.
Might file a, might file a, uh, work as calm.
Oh, there it is, okay, I got another one. I kept one just in case. Okay, so, moving on, we're way behind, sorry.
Oh, that was worth it, that was.
And I would just like to point out that I have had financial reports for several weeks of different kinds that have been sitting here that he hasn't looked at or taken.
Yes, we know, we know that.
So, I know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make it clear that there are, and I've told the board in the past that a lot of these financial reports have to be hand-done because we don't have the capability, so I have probably fifteen spreadsheets over there that we've worked on.
When I, last week, did you forward over those financial statements I asked you to forward? The ones that were far the.
The pines? Yeah, I did it that, when you were sitting in my office, yes, that, that moment, which was the second time I had sent them, because I first sent them in June. I'll get you another pen though.
I think Mike and I, we, we get our, I mean, just for the, you know, just for the record, because I've been hearing for several weeks that, you know, we don't get, uh, you know, these packets and so forth. My practice on the school committee was, uh, by the Thursday or Friday before a meeting, certainly by a Friday before a meeting for that weekend, we would get an agenda for us to study. I, I studied that agenda over the weekend. I think Mike and I probably take it off, uh, online through our, our email. I know that Ed comes down here and picks up, you know, hard copies and stuff, so we have the information on Fridays typically. We have, and our, our duty on this board is to study the agenda and the packet and the correspondence and the minutes, all those things at this meeting, not minutes before a meeting, but throughout the weekend.
Does this board think that the paperwork, we're sending the paperwork out how many days before the meeting?
They sent Thursday.
It's gonna be done by Thursday.
Thursday, we have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
I mean, I, I think it's adequate.
I, I think it's fine.
You come down here and pick, pick it up, the packet, you're, you're well informed.
I read it when I have an hour to kill, and I go through it. I mean, I don't need six weeks' notice for a meeting.
Now, we, we have, we have last-minute updates, that's, that's a normal, unfortunately, that's a normal course. It happened to be on a really big issue, but still, you know, that does happen.
But I know that there's information there.
I know I haven't been able to get my paperwork, I have sent my wife down to get it, so I mean, and I need to read it.
I get it online.
Well, they do email you, so you do have it there as well.
I know, I'm not saying that, I know, but I've sent her down for the hard copy. All right, so moving on, Sam, I'm sorry.
Good, thank you.
This might actually go smoother.
This is gonna be a good night.
This might be, this might be better.
I should've asked for more. Uh, Sam Jocelyn, uh, Groveland Building Commissioner, I was here last meeting requesting an increase in fees.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you for having me, and, uh.
And I'll, I'll say one thing, thank you for getting your response so quickly to us. We asked for it, you did it, and as far as I'm concerned, you're doing your job.
Thank you.
Go ahead, move on.
Um, taking a look, la, last time, I looked at the surrounding town fees, similar-sized towns, uh, proposed going to the low end of the average. Um, there was some concern about that because we've had such a long time between that it would be, uh, I think, too big of a swing. Um, so what I did is I went back, took a look at, you know, what we need to stop bringing us into, you know, this, this millennium. Basically, looking at the FY in, uh, fifteen information, um, was eleven million dollars roughly in construction value in town. Revenue collected for that was forty-four thousand and some change. Uh, basic cost to operate the building departments, a little, uh, just a little under fifty-three thousand, which left a eighty-five-hundred-dollar deficit or difference that ends up getting paid out of the general fund rather than fees. And much like was, that was brought up with the field, you know, it is somewhat of a user fee. Um, you know, I, I, I made the case last time that, you know, if I'm struggling to pay for my groceries, I don't wanna supplement my next-door neighbor's pool and cabana. You know, that shouldn't come out of my tax money that I'm looking to go to police and fire and the schools. That's why most towns adopt this, that those fees should cover the department's costs.
You should be operating at zero.
Pretty much, yeah, and I mean, and, and it should be a global zero, because we do have other boards and committees that look at some of this, so this just covers the bare-bones wages and expense lines. It doesn't start to help cover, you know, insurance costs, uh, time by Board of Health or Conservation put in and reviewing these, fire department's time in reviewing this. This is just a absolute.
Yeah, okay.
Bare-bones kind of proposal. The other thing that I found in, in going back and looking at that is we had a minimum seventy-five-dollar, um, permit fee.
For under ten thousand?
Well, what it, what it comes down to is it's a square footage cost. If I do out the calculations right now based on last year's intake, we're about four dollars per thousand. I'm proposing now to ju, bump that up to five, which is half of what I requested last time, which is, like I said, on the low end of what the other towns, um, typically charge for a permit fee. I, I didn't, and that, that's taking into account, taking that seventy-five-dollar minimum fee and, and doing away with it, because when you calculate out the five-dollar per thousand, um, most permits that are under ten thousand dollars will end up being less than that seventy-five minimum fee. So the guys that are doing the small projects, the people that, again, typically don't have the money, it's the roof repairs, I've got siding to repair, rotten trim, those types of things are these small dollar ones, and with that seventy-five, we're kinda tagging them, you know, on the low end rather than having that scale be equal across the board.
If, if you wanted, if you wanted to go from four dollars per thousand to five dollars per thousand, what is the average around for the other towns per thousand?
The low-end average, I, I attached a sheet, the low-end average is ten dollars per thousand.
Okay.
And I proposed that last, last meeting. Um, again, there was some concern with the board, uh, Dan had some concerns and a, a, a different view as to, uh, how to view those permit fees. Um, so I was asked to take a, a secondary look at it, and, you know, with this number at five per thousand, I mean, realistically, I'd like to see something between the five and the ten. Um, but I felt in the effort of moving forward, I'd at least propose the five, and at least, you know, then we've, can kinda take in little bits of nibbles.
At that five dollars per thousand, how much closer does that get you to operating at zero at fifty-three thousand?
Uh, it should just about get the wage and.
So you're not talking about a massive increase here, a hundred percent increase?
No, I mean, most, most people aren't gonna notice the difference between the three dollars per thousand and five dollars per thousand.
Right.
Uh, where your big difference is gonna be on something like, um, you know, a, a, a solar field or a, um.
Chester.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, a big project, so of course, they're gonna see that, that dollar amount because it's based on essentially the five dollars per thousand's a half a percent on every permit.
Yeah, and they could've, if it's a big project like that, millions and millions, they, they, they could afford that.
It's a standard cost that contractors put in, is there's a cost of permitting, and most cities and towns are at one percent. Uh, that's what I was proposing, a little bit less than the one percent. Uh, this is about a half a percent, a, and again, it's, it's just in an effort to move it forward.
It seems, it seems to me that you've more than adequately captured the inspectional services component of your budget.
Yes, yes.
Which is a significant. I, I think where we're getting caught up into some semantics here, on this board, it's not your fault, it's our fault, is that, uh, are we asking you, are we expecting you, are, do you have a vision or a goal that you wanna capture through fees? All the dollars required to run your department or just enough dollars to capture the inspectional services component of your department? I think this does a good job of doing just that.
This will cover that? Ideally, I'd like a slight umbrella.
Yep, and that, that's something you may have to ask for when the volume of permitting goes, reverts to its mean, because right now, we are at an explosive high end.
Exactly.
So we're gonna make it up on volume. That's why we can move the number.
So, right now, it's not a bad number right now. Um, do I think it's realistic to sustain at, at that number? Probably not.
Not sustainable, no.
Uh, but again, this at least gets us into, at, at a zero balance, it doesn't have us in the negative side. Um, again, reduces those low-end fees so that the people that are doing the smaller projects don't get tagged with a seventy-five dollar. It makes the fees easier to understand because instead of a thirty cents per square foot, what if I don't have a square foot? What if I'm doing a window job or something there, y, you know, so we have this kinda, let's guess what we're doing, uh, for a permit fee. This is very straightforward, it's a. Cost of the project, it's, it's based on that cost.
It's fear though, it's fear.
Exactly.
It's streamlined fear.
Yeah, and that, that's the idea, is I want it to be easy to understand, so when people are, are calling up and understanding, mo, and that's why most go to this dollar per thousand figure, uh, because it's, it's very easy to understand, it's simple.
Right.
Um, there was a couple other alterations I made, uh, just trying to bring down some of the other outside costs, uh, replacement cards, things of that nature. Um, there was a couple things in here that we just don't have a, a fee schedule for at this point, uh, temporary occupancy permits. Uh, some folks, when they get to a point, they need to do a temporary occupancy, so say I'm doing a, um, renovation or, or constructing a two-story home, and I get my first floor, I've got kitchen bedrooms, bathrooms, I have a living unit, but I can't afford to continue. I can give them that temporary occupancy so that their permit stays valid, they don't have to go back through the process, put it on hold essentially, and let them take care of, you know, maybe a year later or a few months later, when, when finances come together, work on that upstairs. And then work towards a permanent, you know, a, a, a full occupancy, and this comes into play with, uh, the banks quite often, where they need to show at a certain point, a, an occupancy certificate, that they have a viable living unit there or conditions of your, your funding change. Um, so th, this helps those folks move that forward. Um, so, you know, a standard fee is fifty, I, I put that in there for, you know, what I'm anticipating.
Ed, Ed, what's your, how do you feel about it?
Uh, actually, Sam, I'm glad you came back after two weeks ago. Uh, and myself, I've been thinking about this for the last couple of weeks, and, and I, we're listening to what, what everybody said on the board, and, uh, my way of thinking, uh, if, if I put up a, a, a hundred-thousand-dollar addition, and based upon what you were saying, and, and it's true, the, the neighbors are subsidizing, uh, that. And then I go around and I turn around after that is done and I turn around and sell it. I mean, my neighbors are paying for my profit on the house, uh, the increase, and, you know, I, I, I liked your analogy when you brought it in, and I, I thought about it, and I, and I thought what Joe said also, and Joe had a good comment about, uh, maybe he's gonna slow down a little bit of the, uh, the building in Groveland, I don't think, uh, uh, some of these fees are gonna do that, but I.
Yeah, and I, I think as that comes, we can, can go back and revisit, and I mean, that, that's part of my responsibility here, is to make sure the department, you know, at, at least where we stand is brought to the selectmen, and then we can make that adjustment if needed or if warranted.
And I'm inclined to support it, but just, uh, just from my own knowledge.
Sure.
Can you just, uh, elaborate on, like, what is the transfer of the permit?
Uh, so, a lot of homeowners, again, for, this comes into place with either two, two circumstances, uh, funding issues where they've gone to a bank, they've wanted to get a loan, but in order to do that, they need to show that we've got a permit to build on the land, but they don't have a contractor in place yet. So, what the transfer is, the transfer is that permit right from the homeowner to the contractor, so they assume that liability, and there's, there's administrative costs essentially involved with that and, and redoing those, those documents. Um, the other end of it is if I have a contractor that is on the permit and they're not performing and I wanna kick them off the job, um, again, now we can officially pull those folks away so that their liability, I guess, ends there and we can put a new contractor on. So, it doesn't happen too, too often. I mean, most people, when they go into a project, know who they're gonna use, and again, most contractors stay on the job from beginning to end. Um, this comes into play a lot, um, if things go really bad, then it's, it becomes a legal issue. But again, the, the first instance with the bank, again, a lot of times those banks, in order to give you funding, need to see that it is a buildable lot, that you can, yes, I can build a single-family home on this lot, it's not just your, you know, I, I, I'm sure I can. It's an actual documentation from the town that says, yes, this is buildable. So, having that card in hand to give the bank a copy sometimes necessary before you even get structural plans and, and know who your contractor is.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, so basically, Sam, at the five dollars, or whatever you proposed was a five?
Yep.
Five dollars, we're gonna pretty much run flatline.
That's the intent of it.
That's the intent, to run flatline like we discussed.
Yeah.
So if you went six dollars, where do you think that would bring you? I mean, hypothetically.
Uh, with each dollar increase, I mean, you're, you know, based on that eleven million, um, you're essentially increasing by roughly ten thousand.
So, you don't see your department would need that? You, you think you can do it?
At this point, I, I, I don't have enough history to really.
So, if we went with the, if we went with the five, and we did it like the, I know the, um, the zoning board just reduced their rates and they did it for a time, um, period, if we, as a board, discussed to go with the five for, say, I don't, six, eight months, something that you thought, and we revisited, and see how things are going and revisit it.
We can always revisit. I think we'll have a major revision when the volume of permitting reduces back to its norm rate of what it was a few years ago.
So, if, if we wanna.
Right now, I mean, right now, we're not passing anything on to the tax, the, the taxpayers, residents.
I think, I think the five dollars and keeping it at a zero balance, it's perfect.
Sam, right, I, I'm, so that's where I am, and revisit it, and whatever you think is, you, if you're saying six months is too early, Bill, give me eight months or whatever, I mean, but listen to what you have to say, you're the professional.
The under, the under, the under ten thousand, the sensitivity to the under ten thousand project is really big in this town. It's an aging town. I know of people that are putting in ramps, contemplating putting in ramps, widening hallways and knocking down windows to put indoors for aging, you know, parents or themselves and, you know, wheelchairs, and so that, that's really good, that we're very sensitive to the folks that need to make those modifications to their homes for small projects and not hitting them with a.
And again, I think, again, having that scale where it's, you know, very even top to bottom, uh, you know, helps out quite a bit.
So, I think we've had enough discussion. Is it, are you happy, Ed?
Maybe, maybe Ed or I can make a motion.
I wanna make a motion on the five-dollar rate that the Groveland Section has proposed.
Is five-dollar rate or a, all of the?
The changes, yes.
All the changes. All, all the changes.
The permit fee schedule as, uh.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the permit fee schedule because.
Okay, and, and I would second it. And, uh, any other discussion on it?
I'm for it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous, for.
Okay.
Great.
Could I ask one more? Uh, Joe just reminded me, it's a policy that I put into place in, uh, in Newbury when I went there, um, four homes, or portions of homes damaged by fire or natural disaster. Uh, I would ask the board, allow me to waive those fees at that time.
That would, that's.
That'd be, that'd be great.
That's customary for us, I think.
Yeah.
It, it's, it may be customary, but to have an, an actual motion and, and those approvals, otherwise I don't have the authority to waive fees. Um, but again, I think in those instances, it's very justified that, you know, someone's lost, you don't, don't kick them when they're down.
Right.
Does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, under a disaster, a fire, a flood, uh, or what have you, that, uh, would give the Groveland Inspector the right to waive the fees.
I second that.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yep, I'm for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sorry to keep you up late.
Nope, not a problem, it was entertaining, well done, Sam, thank you.
So, the next thing on the agenda is the special town meeting discussion to set a date for the formal open of the warrant.
So, the only item I have is, we need to post a warrant to notify residents at least fourteen days prior to whatever date you're looking at. So my recommendation to the board would be mid to late October.
And is there, would there be any other reason to have that meeting? Is there anything else that might come up?
There are a couple housekeeping items. Um, I know that Sam is looking to, um, do a zoning amendment, um, that he's been working on with zoning and planning, um, to change some things before the big zoning goes through that he'd like to see. Um, we may have some budgetary items, just minor things that we would like to go forward with, and then by doing this tonight, you would open it up in case anyone else has an article they'd like to submit. So if the trustees figure out their bylaws and wanna submit a change, then they could certainly do it at that point.
So, do we wanna pick a date in October, or do we not have to do that now?
Yeah, you should pick this, so it's normally a Monday night, um, and let me see when the meeting's schedule is.
For a selectman meeting night.
Or non.
Shouldn't, no.
Yeah, so, um. So, uh, your meetings on October would be the fifth and the nineteenth, so maybe you do the twenty-sixth.
Fourth, fifth, yeah.
The twenty-sixth would be the last Monday in October.
Think, yeah, the fifth is probably too early.
So the fifth is a selectman meeting night, if you wanted to forego that, yes.
Yeah, so obviously, the twelfth, twelfth or there's thirtieth.
Yes, the twelfth is a holiday.
Yes, Columbus time.
All right, so we can do that.
So the twenty-sixth would be a Monday that you don't, or you could certainly do it the nineteenth and just have a non-meeting.
I, I'd say twenty-sixth sounds reasonable.
Bill?
What's that?
Twenty-sixth, October?
Yeah, it's fine with me, yep.
Yeah, looks fine.
All right, so October twenty-sixth. Um, and, so if someone would like to make a motion that that's the date you'll schedule and that you just formally open the warrant just for procedural purposes.
I'll make a motion that we have a special town meeting on October twenty-sixth.
Open the warrant.
And the warrant is officially open.
And the warrant is officially open.
Yes, so people, if there's any articles that need to be submitted, um, they should get them really by October fifth, because then that will give town council a week to review it.
What you mean, summer program, blah, 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 blah.
Correct, any articles that need to be submitted.
So you'll write that into the motion as well?
I will write that into the motion, yes.
You gonna read back my motion for a moment?
As soon as I write it, um.
Do we need a, a second and a, and a?
She's gonna rewrite it so we can have an official motion and then we'll get a second.
So, you're making a motion to hold a special town meeting on Monday, October twenty-sixth. Um, you are also officially opening the warrant with articles to be submitted no later than October fifth for consideration. Uh, actually, I have to back that up, because you all need to vote on them before that, so really by September thirtieth, which is only a few weeks. So September thirtieth is when you'd have to, because then I have to give them to you on October fifth to discuss.
He's gonna make sure people know ahead of time, we gotta get the warrant.
Yeah, I can send an email, once you do it, I can send an email out to any interested.
So that's my motion.
Yep, with articles to be submitted no later than September thirtieth.
Yes.
Okay, so, are we good with the motion?
That's my motion, need a second. That's my motion, need a second.
Someone wanna second it?
I'll second it.
Ed will second it and all in favor?
I'm for it. That's unanimous.
Okay, so can we move on? Okay, so we have the minutes from the August tenth, two thousand fifteen, meeting minutes.
Yes.
We wanna vote on them? Someone wanna make a motion to accept them if they've been read?
I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Okay, so Ed, do I have a second? On the tenth?
I'll second that, I'll second.
Okay, seconded and all in favor?
All in favor?
Alright, okay.
Unanimous?
Accept the resignation of Amy Kramer, library director, effective September second, two thousand fifteen.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Amy Kramer, library director, effective September second. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Yep.
Unanimous?
Accept the resignation of Julie Hawes, registrar, effective August seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Is that zoning board?
Zoning board, she is also a registrar, so she is resigning in her capacity as registrar due to family illness.
Not zoning board.
Not zoning board.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Julie House, the registrar, effective August seventeen, twenty fifteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor, unanimous?
Okay, to declare two zero-turn mowers as surplus, estimate value six hundred for both.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Bob Ericilian's proposal to declare two zero-turn mowers as surplus with an estimated value of six hundred for both.
I would like to have some discussion.
Yep.
Number one, where do they belong? Where do they go?
They were highways, lawn mowers, correct.
Where do they go?
Well, they're not, right, well, if you declare them surplus, we can try and sell them and we can see if we can get anything for them. He's determined that they're pretty much worthless, but maybe we could get six hundred for the metal.
Well, if we made the motion, I would like to have the, and make sure that we at least somehow advertise them. I don't know a lot behind them. I don't know how badly, I don't know if they're blown more, I don't know.
Yeah, we can certainly put them out. We do have an auction site where we have the COA van that was declared surplus last year. We could see if there's any interest in them.
It's just that sometimes like I hear the fire department and stuff, when something's surplus in town government, they think it's junk, but there's, there could be some value there.
There could be. They don't work, but there could be some value if someone wants to take it.
Amendment to it that...
Well, there's the yard sale thing coming up, can't we sell them at those two?
We could.
I would like to amend and say that we give it a good effort to try and sell them and get some value out of them.
Sure.
So, that's my amendment to the motion?
Friendly amendment to Joe.
Friendly amendment, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, we would do that anyway, so.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Does someone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Mike's gonna second it and all in favor?
Yeah.
A four, unanimous?
Okay, so, does anyone have anything on the new or old business? Ed?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Anything on the Washington Park update?
Washington Park itself? I talked to, well, I heard from one of the committee members today. So, they are, I think I told the board, they formed a smaller committee amongst themselves to work on the proposals. They have not started on that yet, so they are just getting themselves together now to start on it. I got an email this morning, so my guess is now they're going to, maybe now that school's back in, they have some time, I don't know. So, they are starting to work on that.
List of town-owned properties that maybe we could look at declaring it surplus and...
Yeah, so we, now that we have, I can certainly get that from the assessors 'cause now that I've gone through all the taxes and we know it's legally town-owned, we should be able to get a list of that.
So, do you think by next meeting, we can get that list?
Oh, yeah, I think she can probably print it tomorrow, yep.
No, I mean, I'd rather have it during the meeting, that way there we can...
Well, it'll be in your pack. I can put it on as an agenda, you know.
To discuss it, to discuss it.
Yes, I can put it on under discussion.
And any, and I don't, I don't know who to address this to, it would be maybe to you, Bill, is the, the permit list you were working on a, on a permit list for...
I talked to Debbie Webster and she has already discussed it with the new building inspector, he's all in favor of it. And it is moving forward, they're waiting for Merrimack Valley Planning to actually put the, the packet together, which will be a draft packet and we're gonna sit down as a committee and go through it and accept it. So, she's thinking, she was thinking in another month, no more than a month's time, that would be together.
Good.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just was looking, can I help?
Yep.
I was just looking to get some more information on where we are with the pines. It's got paved, that's great.
Paving is done. The weather has been too hot for them to do the curbing. The pavement is still too soft to drive the heavy equipment on, so their hopes was to do that this week, but now that we have a heat wave, it will not happen for Groveland Day. The boat ramp is currently out to bid. Those bids are due back on September twenty-eighth, I think. We have about nine companies so far that have taken out our bid documents.
What is left in the account there?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact. Yeah, it's around there, so we do estimate the boat ramp to be, it went down two thousand from the last time, two hundred ninety-two thousand is the estimate. I will tell you, which I told him not to agree to, but the road commissioner has said if the bids come in too high, he will do that in his department and not pay the money. So, we're really waiting to see what the bids come back in at.
So, at best case, we have forty-eight thousand or so to...
We haven't finished paying all of the paving bills, so the paving was expected to be a significant amount.
Seven thousand.
Seventy to eighty thousand. Then we have to do the curbing and then they'll, the highway department will backfill and seed the areas around it. They'll be very little because we do have a price on putting the streetlights in, which was sort of the next piece that we wanted to do, is about seven thousand. So, that would pretty much take us down to nothing. What I had said to Bill was, what we certainly could do is then, you know, see what we need to get the remaining fields and a bathroom and then go to CPA for that, 'cause we have not used taxpayer money, one ounce on that project.
Do we have an idea of what going to CPA would involve for dollar value? Has anybody...
Well, bathrooms, I don't know specifically 'cause I don't know the size that he would propose, they are larger than the ones from Shanahan and we all know how that turned out, so.
My concern is that every time something comes up, it's like, oh, we'll go to CPA and see if we can get it, we'll go to CPA. CPA has a finite amount of money, so we can't keep going to CPA and asking them to approve things. Where there should have been a budgeted project that would, should have been, I guess, budgeted. Well, yeah, I mean, I would have thought that there'd be more completed.
But I think to Bill's point earlier is this project has now been going on for six, seven years.
Right.
So, what they originally estimated for cost has changed dramatically in that time.
Right, so as we said before, the more the time passes, time kills a lot of things, but...
We did a lot of that in-house, which should have brought the cost down.
Correct, which it did.
Which it didn't, I mean, we've gone through the budget though, right? We've gone through the amount of money.
Right, but it did, I mean, it did bring the cost down, 'cause for the highway department, it was their regular shift, it was only if there was any overtime, which was minimal. We did have to rent equipment, we did have to pay for materials, but all the labor was done by your highway department.
I wasn't involved in it in the beginning, I don't know how, how involved, you know, what we were supposed to get for our buck. How much was the total amount of money in that count roughly?
It's about seven hundred thousand.
Oh, there's been rumored at like nine fifty.
From what I've seen, 'cause it goes back, our system doesn't go back as far as money started coming in, so it looks like we've gotten about seven hundred thousand.
From six years ago?
So, seven hundred thousand and we spent, you got what left right now, three forty-five?
Four hundred's gone.
So, three forty-five minus seven hundred leaves us with...
Three sixty?
Three sixty.
Three hundred and sixty thousand to put a road in, to put the infrastructure in.
So, since I've been here, it's, they obviously leveled the area, they did all of...
From the sand people.
Yes, yes. They did all of the utility work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, infrastructure.
The infrastructure, so the electrical, the water, the sewer. The plans we've had to pay for, you know, engineering costs.
Yep. And again...
And they did some prep work down the road, so the prep work is in for the bathrooms, things like that.
And we can't, we no longer can start the, oh, we have, it's out to bid, so...
Well, we can certainly not award it if we decide, I mean, we can certainly choose not to award it.
So, if we don't award it and we turn around and we sit there and say, the engineering's already been done for that project, can that engineering, does it go junk because we're not doing it?
Yes.
Why does it go junk?
Well, because we're on a timeframe with permits and waivers.
Well, permitting would go junk, but not the actual plan and in the design of...
Well, no, because the engineering study is based on what the Army Corps of Engineers will allow us to do, given the timeframe. So, if anything changes with the Army Corps permitting, then we may have to change the engineering structure. So, I mean, I don't think it would be a lot, but I think it would change if we went to another permitting year.
So, there's the increased cost, right?
Correct, correct.
And the timeline of this work has to be done in November to December?
The in-water work is only allowed November first to March thirty-first. So, that's why we plan to award the bid the first week in October, that will give them time to, thirty days to order the materials and hopefully start as close to November first as they can.
The only thing is, in, I know it's hot talk and I'm not criticizing, it's a great job, it's really coming along nice. I just don't wanna have to answer to people that don't think they got their bang for their buck. That's why I wanna make sure it's publicly known what went on.
Right, but again, I would just caution because it's not costing people, it's just a benefit that they're seeing from the town selling the things.
It didn't cost the people dying.
Correct, so they're just seeing improvements.
The money came from the sand that was sold, one hundred percent, went into account and the project has been done with that money at this point in time. I clearly understand that.
Correct, so...
It hasn't cost the taxpayers a penny.
No, it's just been an eyesore because there's been a lot of infrastructure going. Again, you have to deal with the infrastructure before you do the talk.
I know we're not gonna have this done for Groveland Day and I know that the curbing can't go in. I don't know, I don't know what they can do to clean it up any more than it is, because they gotta put the curbing in to put the dirt behind the curbing. So, I mean, I think we're at a catch twenty-two myself. I mean, it isn't that unpresentable the way, I mean...
No, it looks better than it did.
Right, they have hot talk and what have you, so...
Well, I think last year, Groveland Day and the Speedway reunion was in, was in all dirt.
Right, right, so we're ahead of, we're not ahead, we're ahead of what we were last year.
Better than it was.
Okay, alright, so...
That's it for me, that's...
Okay, anything else, Joe?
No, not for new and all, I have something for selectmen. I'm good, yep.
So, under new business, I'm going back to what I said before on this pumpkin, to try and involve the community and give them something to be involved in. As I stated before, I wanna put out in front of town hall someplace, which maybe we can discuss it a little bit. I was thinking maybe up the sidewalk, up to the building or across the front of the building. I don't know if I'd wanna put it too close down on the road and have people down by the road. I called today and got some prices on some scaffolding, I was gonna have five, four, three, two, one. And set that up, the company will come in, they said they'll set it up. And the price for the rental of that for, I think it was three weeks, was four sixty-seven fifty and the plywood to go on it was one forty-five fifty, it's six twenty-five. I called Claire Walsh from the Activities Committee, I had a conversation with Claire and Claire said she thinks she can cover the six twenty-five for the rental and the staging. So, what my proposal is gonna be, is at a certain date, if we discuss a certain date, say it's October fifteenth, the staging gets set up, people in the town, we advertise it, they know, they bring a pumpkin down carved, they put it up on top of the staging, there'll be, let's say, it's, let's say it's a certain night. We're there, people are there to put it up on the staging and then, right before Halloween, we'll have another date, they can come down and would light them. Something to involve the town people, to get them out, to give them something to be involved in. And I think for six hundred and twenty-five dollars, I think it's a good thing to try and involve the town people.
I was thinking about this after we spoke today, I think maybe we should look at the lawn in front of the police and fire department 'cause there are security cameras and I think if we place pumpkins, they may get smashed. So, maybe if we put them there where there's some security around and on the police lawn, people will be less tempted to take them.
Groveland. The only thing procedurally is we wanna, whatever we decide, it's a great idea, we wanna put this on an agenda item, we can't make the decision tonight.
Okay.
It has to be an agenda item, we can't just make a decision on something that was not on the agenda.
So, I can add it to the twenty-first and by then we should definitely know if we have the money and then we can easily start advertising it. Is she definite?
She told me she'll give us the money.
Okay.
It's, I know it's kinda silly, we have to kinda bring this all back up, even if it's exactly the...
So, and the agenda item, we really need to come up with two dates, one to drop off, one to have the staging set up and then the last one to light the pumpkins. And we're gonna need, I'll work on getting people to work with me the night they're gonna place the pumpkins and then the next night I'll have to have people work with me to light the pumpkins.
Yeah.
So...
I'll help you on that, Bill.
Okay, so we'll get people together to do that. I think it's just a thing to, you know, we as a board really need to also look at doing something fun for the town and involve the town people as well as...
Now, my wife's gonna want me to come from pumpkins.
Well, she should. Get the kids up there.
Yeah, no problem with that.
You know, what we could do is we can talk about this next week, but they could even dress up in costumes the night they come to light them, I mean...
You could do it like the Thursday before Halloween or something.
Right, and maybe have popcorn, like, you know, popcorn or something like that, whatever.
Well, I think at that point, you know, once you have the dates, I would recommend, you know, maybe reaching out to the firefighters association, the police association, see if they wanna maybe sponsor something the night, the library.
What I was gonna try to do is actually talk, talk to the fire department guys to light them.
Maybe you can have...
Have them light them, maybe they can be in their uniform, the kids will get a kick out of it and have them light them, so that's what I was thinking.
They wanna cook out out back of the building too.
Yeah. Wide side.
Thank you.
Maybe you can have some of those, since it's gonna be an agenda item, maybe they can come in five minutes and after you talk to them and hash out some of those details.
Have the fire department come in?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead, put on them, have them come in.
So, you want me to talk to police and fire or just fire?
Both.
I don't know, the only thing, I'm not trying to shoot you down on what you just said. I just, if we put it in front of the police lawn, which is, I'm worried about parking. Are people gonna park in front of the police station when they come in to drop the pumpkin off? That's what I was trying to get at more, where they go out here, walk around, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I can, my only fear would be just that if they're there for a week or two weeks, I just don't want someone to smash them, so...
People are gonna do it, they're gonna do it, unfortunately. And, you know, the policeman, the police will know that, they will talk to them, say they're gonna be there, can you guys keep a special eye on it?
Maybe they'll have a suggestion.
And it's lights out front anyway, all night, pretty much, right?
They might have a suggestion on...
Right, well, you know, I was planning on getting some cornstalk and decorating the poles and stuff, so, I mean, so, I mean...
Well, my only reason for police is I was thinking, you know, the two associations may wanna do something that night. They may wanna say, maybe we'll sponsor popcorn, maybe we'll do something.
Again, I'm not gonna try and, I want it to be the town of Groveland, I do. I want it in front of the town because I don't want it to be the police, I don't want it to be the fire, I want it to be the town of Groveland. I wanna represent the town, I want it in front, I mean, that's just me, I mean...
No, I don't mean the location, I just mean to add extra things that night, that maybe we have someone with coffee or maybe we have someone with popcorn or...
We can't talk, we're not talking to sleep about it.
Well, if we have some idea of date, you can throw them out, just so that I can...
Well, Halloween's what?
It's a Saturday, Halloween is a Saturday.
So, Thursday before Halloween?
Would be the twenty-ninth if you wanted to do that.
Okay, we'll light the twenty-ninth and we should probably have them out there for two weeks before the twenty-ninth, so we'd say the fifteenth, we start putting them out there.
Two weeks, aren't they gonna be rotted by then?
You think so?
It's the week before, yeah.
I think just the week before.
So, the twenty-second?
Well, this is gonna come in cheaper, 'cause I said, I said for three weeks.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-second, we put them out, twenty-ninth, we light them.
What is it again?
Twenty-second, we put them out.
Okay, so twenty-second, we put them out.
And hopefully we don't have to hire a pumpkin detail.
So, do you want people, do you want people to have a specific time that they would drop them off or are you just gonna say any time? Well, we, it's supposed to be an agenda item to vote on, I'm just trying to get some logistics.
Yeah, I was thinking of having them come down right before it gets too dark.
After school, three to five, something like that, like three to five.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to make it so people are kinda here at one time, so they get to know each other, they talk to each other, which is, if I'm gonna be here in that time of year, it's gonna need to be from five, four-thirty to seven-thirty, something like that, you know what I mean?
We have lighting, it's gonna be dark out at five-thirty.
If people wanna come at three, they can come and put their pumpkin up there, sure, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, they could certainly drop it off here too, if they can't make it to the...
Your office.
Right, so what we need to do is have some of the firemen come in and talk to them about if they can be here to help and what have you.
Alright, maybe you can do some...
I was actually gonna ask Tracy if, when the time comes, we'll have him or Chris, whoever's in charge over there, to put it on the...
Yeah, to film it.
Do like, like three to seven.
And then put it on the website as well.
Yeah, we can put it on cable, on the website.
Whatever we can do for PR to get it out.
Yep, I can send a memo out.
I think that, you know, sometimes people watch these meetings and people say the selectmen are not so proactive sometimes, I guess, but, I mean, I think this is gonna be one way to show that we're caring about the town and we've duly given back something.
And how about the lighting, what time would you expect to light them on the twenty-ninth, like...
Probably some ways, I'm thinking, it gets dark early, right? And people gotta come home from work, usually their fathers are gonna wanna be involved, so seven, seven-thirty, something like that, you think? Too late for kids? Is it, is it a school night?
It's a school night, probably seven.
Yeah.
Between six-thirty and seven?
Six-thirty to seven, or six to seven, give them more time, six to seven?
Yes, you can have like, the lighting ceremony will be between six and seven?
Yeah, sure.
And that way, if we have anything else going on, we can coordinate it.
They're gonna have to go up there and constantly light them, so, you know, some of-
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so I will, I will write this up and put it on the agenda.
That'll be in the bottom of your bokeh.
And the last thing is, I don't know, which I didn't talk about, you can help me with this, is we need to put like a, like a, a sign on top of, like, Groveland pumpkin lighting or something. We don't have money anywhere to buy a sign.
Oh, we use the electronic sign up front, that's one thing.
Yeah, that's one thing, but I'm talking about, you know, how Staples, if you can go to Staples and for short money, you can get a paper one. But if we get wins, it's gonna blow apart. Now, are we gonna do this every year, do we get one that's on a, more of a-
I, I can look, I mean, I'm sure depending on the cost, I can get like a plastic sign that maybe we can reuse and-
Something that we can put on the-
Or we can wipe out and change the date or something like that, I can see, I'll talk to you about it.
Maybe we can do a date, just do like pumpkin lighting, Groveland pumpkin lighting, or something stupid like that, that we can hang on, hang up there, that we can leave up there for the week or two weeks' time, whatever it is.
I think you put it on the electronic sign out there, you get it on the website.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying for the actual staging itself, something that, you know, to put up on the stage, maybe have a couple pumpkins on it or something.
Do you want people to, do we want to have like names displayed on who's donating these pumpkins, or do we not care?
Maybe we can have like a, a book there.
Okay.
I, I, I don't want to get into contests, because then what's gonna happen? Someone's gonna feel like, you know what I mean? I don't want a contest, I just want to have it where people can come, they know their pumpkin, put it up, you know what I mean?
So maybe we, maybe we just make a little thing that has like name and age or something, so if people want to walk around and say, oh, my neighbor did this one, or-
You know those little stickies, those little, you know the little stickies my wife uses on envelopes, the white stickies?
Oh, yeah, labels.
We can give them one of them, and we can have a thing on the, on the side of it, they put their name on a sticky, and as they put them up, they can put them on the sticky, on the, like, some kind of a board.
Okay.
You don't get that?
Yep, I know what you mean.
They can write their name on the sticky, the sticky can go up on the border.
So maybe we have like numbered spots on the, that's probably getting a little too much. But we'll have to, we'll look thick of it, but see, something that they can identify which pumpkin is theirs.
Right.
So that other people could see who's donating and who's producing.
Right, once it's up there, they're not gonna be able to, no, once it's up there, it's pretty corrupt, you know what I mean? I was just thinking a board down below, so they could look at the board and they have their names who put the, you know what I mean, I don't-
Okay, well, I'll see what I can find on it.
Enough time to beat up there, anyway, so I think we're all on board with that, so that's gonna go on for an, another agenda item?
Yep.
Okay, and I think that's all I had for tonight, I don't want to do too much, yeah, I don't even have a problem. So moving down-
Finance director's time?
Um, yeah, we have correspondence minutes from the August twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen meeting, that's in there. Executive session minutes from August tenth, two thousand fifteen. Summons from Brandolini Construction for outstanding balance, that's a letter that came in. Letter from Mr. and Mrs. Robert G. Scott, supporting the Bagnell School program. I got that call, it's a gentleman that had his son, that had a, um, how do I say it?
I believe he was, has a disability.
Disability, that's what I was trying to say, he has a disability. He went to the program as a child, went through the program, became an instructor, and this gentleman said that he had saw one of our meetings, and that he really wanted to put this letter forward and have the selectmen read it, because he said the program was nothing but positive to his son, made of son, just he couldn't, you know, just a great kid and what have you. So that's, you know, he asked, and I said, I'll put it in for correspondence, I'll do a brief overlay of it. Resignation letter from Ian Wilson Crockett from the Board of Library Trustees, effective September two, two thousand fifteen. Resignation letter from Carlos D. Castelli, Castilio, whatever, from the Board of Library Trustees, effective September second, two thousand fifteen. The only other thing I would talk about on that is the Brandolini Construction. I know that you've sent it over to, to the town attorneys, whatever. All I ask is that we just wait, don't talk about it, we wait until we hear back.
Yep, so instead of scheduling an executive session to discuss it at this point, it's probably best that we let town council draft a response, and then we meet to talk about it.
Agreed.
Okay, alright, so then now we're moving on to finance, the finance director's time.
I just have a few things now. So just so the board is aware, letters of advertising have gone out to sixty-two of our taxpayers. It covers the years two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. So anyone who has delinquency past, other than the current year that we're in, has gotten a letter of advertising. The scheduled advertising date is set for, I think it's Friday, October ninth. Residents have until October second to pay off their balance, it must be paid in full in order to stop the advertising from going forward. Once it's advertised, we then give them, the law requires a minimum of two weeks before we then place it into tax title. So once it's advertised, they still have an opportunity to pay it off. And I believe I gave them, I think I gave them three weeks, because the law stresses minimum. So anyone who does not pay off their taxes by that point, we would place a lien against them at the registry of deeds.
What year's taxes, I'm sorry, what did you start with?
Eleven to fifteen.
Eleven to fifteen, thanks.
Yep, so we previously discussed, I'd sent you all the list of two thousand and eleven through fourteen. But now I did include, because it is the timeframe that we would do the two thousand fifteens anyways, so. And if someone owes two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, they need to pay all three years to stop it. If someone owes fourteen and fifteen, again, they need to pay all of that, so. We have had some angry taxpayers come in, some people are not happy, obviously. We now get the pleading cases of why they haven't paid, and when it's going to be sold, or this or that. But the law is clear, it's you pay it all or you're advertised, so. I will keep you posted as we go along, where things stand with that.
Okay, and as I talked about earlier, the, the town property that can be sold, you'll come in, we'll get, next meeting, we'll have an update on that, and we hope we can get, start getting proactive on moving that town property in.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are funny properties, you know, some of them are completely landlocked with no street access. I mean, there are things like that, that maybe we look at a Butters and see if they're interested. You know, there are some houses that we have foreclosed on that we could certainly look at. There are still a few issues with foreclosures that didn't actually happen, that are still tied up with title examiners trying to figure out what the process was. But anything we have absolutely is Town of Groveland, I will give you at the next meeting.
Any idea how much, since the process started, you've collected in back tax?
Since the process started, I don't know. I have, I can tell you what I sent out in letters. Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand is what we sent out in letters, is back to, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And the majority of them, obviously, are two thousand and fifteen. So two thousand fourteen through two thousand eleven, we were down to just a small number of them, but now we have all of fifteen.
And when, when this list comes in, will this list include like the old highway grass property? We have some land that, that we could turn into a dollar amount, like the old highway, and I don't know if it can be used in the future for something else, but, I mean-
I'm assuming if it's listed as Town of Groveland, then that's what I'm gonna get from the assessors.
Right, and that's, that's what, that's a good chunk of land over there, that's three or four acres, so. I don't know if we can put a U-cent to there, but, kind of high up on top of the hill, but, anyway, alright, so are you good with all this stuff?
Yeah, I think that's really all they have.
Alright, selectmen's time?
Selectmen's time.
Selectmen's time, time to be used to make statements, propose future agenda items, or congratulate residents, teams on a conference. This time should not be used to initiate a discussion, just a couple of things. I, I think this new and old business is, it's kind of a little bit redundant. We should have that section called just old business. And then if anybody wants to bring something forward, like Bill, Bill brought a great agenda item for next meeting, that really should just be selectmen's time, because now I'm gonna propose an agenda. It, just a-
It's a little redundant.
A correct term on that, not old business, unfinished business.
Or unfinished business.
Yeah.
So you guys want to take the new out, and just have unfinished business?
Either unfinished or old, but, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so someone make a motion?
Well, I do just want to clarify that it doesn't necessarily have to be unfinished business. You could talk about something that was talked about on a previous agenda, just to follow up with it. So it doesn't necessarily need to be unfinished, but whatever you want to use is fine with me.
Yeah, whatever, as long as, I think if you, if you get rid, because we're proposing agenda items there, and then we kind of tend to do that afterwards also with selectmen's time. But the selectmen's time was, when we invented it, it says here, time to be used to make statements, propose future agenda items, but we're kind of doing it up top.
It's your call, it's your-
So if we, if we, to try and clarify this-
That's, and then, by the way, that is just a chair's call.
Old business would be business that we've talked about prior to, so you're taking out the new and calling it old business. Or previous business, or-
Previously discussed.
Previously discussed business.
Anything that's been on an agenda, you could certainly bring up under that section.
That's fine, as long as we know that it is gonna be, if we're gonna do it, we might as well do it the right way. So however you want to word it, Joe, if it's gonna say, previous, old, whatever.
Just to make it simple, old business, you can put in parentheses unfinished business, previous agenda.
We're gonna take out the new, then.
Yeah, just, so that's a good, you know, maybe that might work. You, you leave it as old business, but then in parentheses, it says unfinished items, unfinished items, previously discussed agenda items, you know, just kind of, this way here, you have a brand-new, uh, board of selectmen members, oh, I know what that is.
Okay.
Geez, I have an idea for a new agenda item, oh, I see, I just have to wait for selectmen's time to do that. It's a kind of, it's a little procedural thing, but.
Alright, so that's all said.
I want to support the board on the decision that was made by the board regarding the, engaging with the attorney to help the library trustees understand their roles. On that, on, on what, on what was approved, did we say that we want to see the list first before we asked the, uh-
They had to submit it to the chair.
Oh, submit it to the chair, okay.
Which will be submitted to you people.
You, you, you think it's premature to get that on the agenda item for next meeting?
Fine with me, if they're gonna have it ready, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, I, they had a meeting after this meeting, I don't know if they're meeting again. I can, I can certainly reach out to Beth and see if-
Hey, Joe, if, if, if you find out from now to the next meeting, you can call me, and I can say, yeah, just do it.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Beth and see when they think they'll have their list.
I just want to, you know, I mean, that's the motion that was approved, and we, we-
Right.
Because of, because the issue is so hot, I don't want to wait till December to do this, you know.
And the only reason I did it, because I'm trying to put neutral to it, if I turned around and said the trustees can do it, other people get mad. So I'm trying to put a neutral spin on it, so we don't have anyone that's in the middle of it.
Well, I didn't vote for the motion, but I want to support the board, so I figured, my, my only, my gut feeling is, let's do it as quickly as possible, because right now the issue is so, you know, people are very emotional and upset about the law.
Well, they also want to get their new members in, too, as well, so, I mean-
Yeah, true.
They're gonna have to move it as quick as they can to get it taken care of.
Alright, well, that's it, that's all I had, just those two items, thank you.
So under selectmen's time, I had one thing, and it's probably, doesn't really matter much, but, I know the town office is open on Monday night, and I was gonna ask Denise, do we have all the offices being open right now, are they all open?
So, all offices that conduct normal business are open in some fashion or another. Not all staff members are here, and boards and committees that do sign-offs, not all of them are staffing locations in the building. So we do have the majority of our resources available on Monday nights.
Okay, so at this point in time, would it make sense to have Cassandra to draft up a letter saying, if this, when I get done with my discussion, that this board would like to see, or would, I don't know how to word it, I'll be word in a minute, these offices open? And again, I guess it would be the board, we can't speak on some voted board that does, we can't speak on, but, I mean, I don't want to demand it, but on the same token, we did this for a reason, and we did it for the people to come in and be able to conduct business. So that's all I'm saying, and again-
So, all of the positions and the employees that are appointed solely by this board and have no other elected authority are here on Monday nights.
Okay.
We have, as I mentioned, some elected boards that do sign-offs that are not here, and we have an elected department that isn't fully staffed, that answers to another board, so.
So if you have an elected department, does the selectman have the right to tell them to be here?
Well, the selectmen set town hall hours, and you still do appoint all of the staff. They just have a middle group, so you could encourage the selec, you know, the elected committees to participate, if you'd like.
I will make a motion that we have Cassandra, reason, doing this for a reason, because I don't want-
I can make the motion for it, I think I know where you want to go with it. Want to hear it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we draft a letter where we ask all appointed board members to be in attendance to conduct the town, the people's business on Monday nights, and that we respectfully request that elected positions would consider to do the same. So we, we tell the appointed people, but then we, we ask the elected folks to-
To eight, is that the element?
And then I, if she drafts it, I can help edit it a little bit, so that it comes out right.
So there's not a set end time. The way, the easiest way to make it work was, whatever departments were open on Friday afternoon time, we took those hours and added them to Monday. So the bylaws require the collector's office and the town clerk to be open until eight. We've held the same standard with the building department, so he is here until eight. Most other departments close between seven and eight, seven or seven-thirty, because they didn't want to add additional hours, because then they'd have to cut elsewhere in the week, so we just cut at noon and Friday and added everything to Monday.
Okay, okay, so I would like to put a friendly amendment to Joe's motion.
Yep.
And I want the letter to go out by Cassandra.
Yep.
I want, the reason my, my reason we had, I don't mean to talk behind, the reason my, I want them-
You mean it comes from her, or we sign it, or it comes from us?
It's coming from us.
Right, of course, yeah, we sign it.
But she's gonna write it, I want it to look like the selectmen are the ones, I don't, not that I'm saying to me, I'm trying to undermine you, I want them to understand the selectmen are the ones asking for this.
Yep.
You know what I mean?
And I'd be happy to-
And that's showing that more power, I, I-
Well, and I'd be happy to provide assistance with editing, editing it also. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to help edit it also, like I've done other letters in the past, so.
I understand what I'm getting at?
Fine.
Okay, so-
So I do just have a follow-up. So if she writes it, do you want her to send it to you, and you will give her permission to send it using her name as the sender? Or do you want it to come back before the board to sign it?
I want the letter to be drafted, that it be on behalf of the selectmen. If someone needs to sign it, if some-
I think he's giving her the authority.
Right, so you're okay with her signing it saying on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the selectmen decided?
I want it to the point where they know it's the selectmen saying this, and it's, it's pretty edged in stone what we want, that's all I'm trying to do.
Yep, and that's fine, I can, I can help her with that.
A motion, a friendly amendment, and I'll second that.
Okay, so second, and then all in favor?
Sure.
Alright, okay.
I'm in favor, it's my motion.
Okay, so Denise, if she, if she doesn't feel comfortable for some reason signing it, she can sign a spot, I'll come in and sign underneath it.
Yeah, I, I don't think she'll have a problem, I think as long as you review the-
Members to sign it, each one of them, you guys want to sign it, go ahead and sign underneath it, okay.
I think as long as she knows, as long as you review it and it's what you want, I don't think she'd have a problem signing it.
Please and thank it everyone, and then we, we're directing the appointed folks, and we're asking the elected folks to consider it. We, we've done letters like that before.
Okay, and that was the last thing that I had under, second time.
I get two items.
I should sit down there, because I put my back to you all night long, I'm sorry.
That's alright, that's alright.
I tried being like, now I'm at the end of the table. I'm gonna be down the other way.
Just, uh, one item that I forgot at the last meeting. About three weeks ago now, the Board of Selectmen were invited to, to tour the new athletic fields at the junior high school, and, and I was down there, along with the, someone on the school, someone on the school committee. We got a nice tour to see what they were doing, and the, the offer was extended to the other members if they, obviously, they're probably working, and, so if they get in touch with the superintendent, he'll give them a, a tour of the athletic field, the new athletic fields. And it, I, I think everybody should-
I've been down there, it's nice.
Yeah, yeah.
I've attended sports, though.
I had a tour.
I've actually ran down there.
I actually had a tour a year ago, too, it was pretty great.
Well, I can tell you the Town of Groveland Water Department, as of today, is not gonna make much money there anymore on the water bill, because they just turned on their water pumps this afternoon, and they're sucking the water out of the river again. So the big amount of money the Town of Groveland's been getting, it will most likely be shut off.
I think, I think, I'm sorry, Ed has some more. I'm, I'm done with that one, just one more item. Yeah, no, I.
It, I, I, I think, uh, we've, we've been, uh, three, three new members of the board, we've been on board now since, uh, uh, early May. And I, I, I think it's time at some point to, to sit down an executive session with the Town Council, so that we can be brought up to speed on some of the, uh, uh, litigation, uh, that's, that's facing the town, uh, just so that we're, we're aware of it. I, obviously, it had to be done an executive session, and I would just suggest that it not be done on a regular meeting night.
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, Town Council had reached out back early in the summer and wanted to schedule something for fall. I think we spoke about it briefly, um, it's just a matter of picking a day, so, um, I can certainly send out a calendar again of, of a certain number of days and whoever's available, um, the most.
Well, no, it, it's, it's whenever, uh.
I don't think there's a lot pending out there, but they would like to come before.
I, I just, I just, not on a Monday night.
Yeah, I would not do it on a, I would not do it on a meeting night, it should be a separate.
When you think about it, um, you know, and you, you know, you work with the military and the government, it, it's like, um, new members should get a briefing, right, you know, a week after they're on the job.
Read into these programs.
When you think about it, you know, so that's a good point.
And Joe, you know what you just said, and that's the problem, that's the problem, when you have these boards that constantly have changeover. When they have a lot of changeover, people don't get it, you know what I mean, it takes, you, you know, you know, you've been a selectman for a long time, it takes a lot, you've been on school committee. You don't get it in one meeting, and then people don't realize how things are run and what have you, and people make comments that shouldn't be made, and you know what I mean?
I have a question of Ed, actually, um, uh, did, did, were you able to go to that? I couldn't make that meeting, I moved my daughter into, uh, Boston, um, at college, but, um, last week, did, were you able to make that meeting on that issue with the?
I think Dan had, I think Dan indicated that he was going.
Uh, uh, apparently the Policy Subcommittee of the School Committee had a meeting regarding the issue and the concern that people had that there was gonna be a fee structure that was not sustainable by the youth groups.
But he answered he was gonna do it.
Yeah, so.
And did we ever hear any feedback from the meeting that they had with the, down in the Center Street, the Center Street with the conservation people?
I don't know what meeting you're referring to.
No, down here, they're in the Center Street.
Oh.
Conservation, in the fire pits, in the.
I think it's this week, I think it's later on this week.
Oh, okay.
Yes, tomorrow night.
Do you know if that's gonna be here?
Um, I believe it's here, I believe.
Text me, or let me know, email me tomorrow with time, because I might.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I'll tell you right now, I think it's, I will send it to all of you.
I, I intend to be here.
Okay, good, um, and we, if there's three or four of us, it doesn't matter, as long as we're not discussing it, we'll be fine, so. So, if it's okay with the, with the chair, if, if I get the consensus of the board, I can send an email to Maria Naffa and ask her for a minute of that school committee meeting last week, to see what decision was made, if that's alright with you.
It is tomorrow night, seven o'clock, in this room.[1755.61]